Come in.
Is the TV ready?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, calling in to order at what, 5:01? On January 13th, Committee of the Whole, I said it backwards, but you all get the idea. Committee of the Whole meeting, January 13th, 5:01, called to order. Rule call. Eadie?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Fortress?
Present.
Fox?
Here.
LaFong Boys?
Here.
Ritchie?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
Need an approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Item E, true in law.
I'll support.
Okay, motion is made to add true in law under Finance?
Item E, other.
Do you want to just make it number eight, under other?
Or do you want to make it E?
Oh, you can just make it E.
Under E?
A, B, C, D, E.
Just creating the list.
At the back there, that one.
Right there.
D and E. That's my number from home. Oh, there's not a E on the one I got tonight. Okay. All right, all my notes are on the one from home, but we'll add true in law, motion made to add E under other, and motion by Ms. Fortress and second by Ms. LaFong Boys, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Maybe I should do rule call. Rule call, censored was discussion. Rule call, Ms. Jamie. Fortress?
Yes.
LaFong Boys?
Yes.
Eadie?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Sorry. Okay, public comment, anybody wishing to speak at public comment? Let's see, we're jam-packed, so we will move on. Please come to the next meeting and speak with us. Buildings and grounds. First topic, door update.
Yes, if you don't mind, if it would be favorable, I'll kind of just walk through them and you can shortstop me as we go through. So the door update is that we're reaching almost conclusion of the doors being installed at the high school. I didn't get a chance to run in and grab you a picture, but they are, they're beautiful. We also are putting, you'll see a bill that'll come through for the good old D locks, because we are putting locks that are all the same, so no matter what in the hall, if you were caught in the hall, you could get into anybody's room. So everybody will have the same key inside those doors. If you, those of you who weren't here, this is part of our COPS grant, and so it's the safety grant, so inside you, there's a flip on, to lock the doors on the inside now, so they don't have to put their hands on the outside to get that to handle. So when I spoke to Greg this morning, he felt like there was probably only four or five doors left.
Oh, that's pretty good. Four or five doors, anybody have any questions for Ben Shapiro?
Does that mean the grant is done, or are we moving to a different building now?
No, 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 it was $694,000 to do the high school, is what you guys approved, and so the grant is only half a million, and that grant was from 2022, and we're just, we have to close it out this year. So we'll, we'll expend a half million dollars with that, and you approve the rest to go into the sinking fund.
Okay.
Nice. Okay, moving on, thank you. Cafeteria update.
The cafeteria is totally complete, we signed out on the architectural, architects' seal for that, so all the small points that need to be completed are finished, and the certificate is with Jamie, and it'll be held in the office for, if it's needed in the future.
Any comments?
Was there anything else that needs to be done in the cafeteria?
No, it was all, oh.
Are we doing the ceiling?
No, the ceiling was not.
It wasn't?
Mm-hmm, and the, the next step, if we choose to do it, is like the back of the building, like where that snack bar used to be and the refrigeration unit, so we'll have to build back up our, our dollars, but we will be getting a new cafeteria supervisor director in February, there'll be some interviews for that, and so at that point in time, they may have some other ideas that they want to talk about throughout the district. Like each one seems to have their own little pieces that they bring to the table, and so we'll develop a plan with them, because three-year plans are due next month.
Do we hire that supervisor, or does Chartwell hire?
Chartwell hires that supervisor. And I'll be on the interview committee when they get down to like three or four people. That's what she said, she said they have 40 applicants.
Oh, wow, that's good.
It is beautiful. Really nice job, it's very, very attractive, very beautiful.
They did a great job designing it.
Very modernized. Hoover and United Oaks fence update.
So we're just waiting for Ms. Dig to come out, and when Ms. Dig comes out, and then we will be able to get those fence items up. I know that I was at United Oaks observing today, doing some informals, and the PE teacher was talking about having to do classes inside a classroom because some of the kids run and get out, and so I think that'll be really great when that gets done, because hopefully if they run and get out, they'll run and get out to the fenced-in area. So that should be done shortly in the next month.
Anyone, comments, questions, no?
I thought that motion failed.
It did not.
It did not?
Uh-uh.
High school floor.
We certainly can go back and relook, but I don't believe so. High school floor update, so I believe it was asked of me about the, the dance, or the gym floor was damaged during dance competition, and they took a table out that had screws on the bottom of it, and moved it and scratched the beautiful floor. So they have come out and fixed those spots, it'll have to be sealed again at another time. We're awaiting the bill to present that, then I'll reach out to the other organization for them to pay that bill. We don't have the bill yet.
Oh, I'm glad they agreed to pay the bill.
Well, they gave me their phone number, and it didn't go to anywhere, so I'll have to search them out another one.
What organization was it?
Uh, I don't know, was it Detroit Dance Team, I'm not sure which one it was, but Dana, Dana knows. I texted them right away, and then, yep. Hopefully it'll work out.
Basketball, high school basketball hoops.
They are up. One is, has the electrical run to it, will be, have to wait a little bit, our electrician is out for a little bit of time, so unfortunately the last one will have to wait, is he's the one that does all the running to it. So they'll be ready to go here, hopefully again within the next few weeks.
Beautiful, beautiful, anybody? Nice. A lot of work getting done here, heating repairs.
I wanted to point out that you'll see in the bills, heating costs, items to be replaced, we're, it's old, our heating infrastructure is old, and so when a motor goes down, it's anywhere from $300 to $1,000, depending on what it is. And so Greg wanted to point out just that, you know, we are having a lot of repairs that need to be done. Our system's old.
What did you say the cost?
Anywhere from $300, depending to $1,000 per system, depending on how much goes down.
Anyone have any questions?
Where's the, where's it going out mostly, what building?
Across the district.
There's not one, one particular building that it's hiring?
All over.
How's that affect things with the cold weather? Are the buildings cold off and on?
Well, we need to remember that the halls are not heated in our buildings, and so oftentimes, like at the high school, people will say we're cold, well, the reality is there's no heat in the halls, and we have doors closed. So, you know, we have balancing that goes on through the online system that they had before, so they can see them and know what the different temperatures are in the different rooms, but still, it's hard to balance a big building.
Okay.
They let us know right away if something goes out.
Next is Cam Hazelwoods.
Yeah, just wanted to give an update, I know I was asked this as well, so that you guys can ask any questions. The, the building has been winterized for the winter time, we didn't see a real reason to get someone in there, and with some of the other things that we've been taking care of in the finance office. I spoke with Greg again this morning, things that'll need to be replaced for someone to live in that house is probably windows that'll need to be painted, the front and back patio needs to be replaced, it has some damage, those windows are the very, the original windows, and so in the spring, we'll open up and do that for some time, interviewing for somebody in the spring into the summertime, you know, probably starting getting us there in the fall, so.
Any comments, suggestions about Hazelwood?
How is that going to affect, like, I know Hazelwood's used a lot in the spring at the different schools, how's that going to affect them going up there?
We send our guys up there to go and get it ready and get it, get the trails ready. That's what they were doing, that's what they did last year at this time, too. The guy wasn't there, so we prepared all of that, got the rooms cleaned, everything up, and ready to go for the kids.
Okay, next is Personnel, Summer Help.
All right, so in the past, we have separated these out by department, this is just everybody all going together, so this is just asking for the approval for the student interns that we've been using for years in the different areas of the district, technology, Buildings and Grounds, Athletics, Communications, and Drama.
Drama's not on.
Oh, I updated it, there's online, there's a new copy.
There was a new copy online?
On the desk, on the table here.
On the table, yeah, she printed it, you know, I thought it was. We caught it at the weekend.
There it is.
Yeah.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
The, the building is in grounds, I see that you have five positions to work inside and outside, then later on, that paragraph reads, the three positions would work 13 hours, 40 hour, 13, 40-hour weeks.
Uh, it shouldn't have been five.
Then it says five people, so how many?
Five.
Is it five altogether? So I was just kind of confused by that.
It's five, I'll fix that up with that, make sure.
And, and it does it again, and I think in the athletics and the other, when I read it quickly.
Athletics, it's two people, 20 hours a week?
Yeah, it said two positions to work, 20 hours per week, two people at 20 hours, and
At 13 weeks, so that's over summer, heavy than a lot of weeks with summer embrace.
That's the cost, that's getting to how we got the cost for it, so
Okay.
Two people at $20, 20 hours, at 13 weeks, at $14 an hour, 10% fringes, get us to $8,000. I see why that's confusing, but.
Yeah, it looks like there's four people altogether, possibly, and I'm thinking, okay, well, maybe it's two, and then two later, after they finish that little
So it's
In the future, we can put a parentheses by that to show the cost, it's how we traditionally have done it, unless the board would like us to change this to, to show you the cost of that, that situation.
And then the drama, the, basically the same, three people at 15 hours, 34 weeks.
So the drama one, sorry to interrupt you, Darren, the drama one, during the school year, it's 15 hours a week, but during the summertime, it's $25 a week, so it's the same three people, I just split that up, I, I mean, I could do total hours if you want, but I decided to kind of break that out there for you, that the $25 a week could only be over like a full week's off during the school year, it's 15 hours a week.
Maybe just word it so we know that it's summer and, you know, the two different. Is that what, is that what you're saying, three people at?
Yeah, it's in the, each one will work $25 a week in the summer, and I think 15 hours a week in the school year, $14 an hour, so I kind of broke up the two totals there.
All right, I was just confused, that's all.
I'm just curious what they do for 40 hours a week, for 34 weeks, for drama.
For four You mean 20 hours each?
Well, it's three people at 15 hours, that's 45 hours a week.
They, they prepare the, the sets, they
But isn't that part of the class?
They organize the areas, no, the class doesn't do all of that, that covering. They help direct, they organize tickets, they get the posters and things down. I mean, maybe we can have them come and share some of the things that they've done.
Scholarships.
I know, two of the, two of the individuals last year got scholarships for theater at Central because of the background that they did.
My question is, what fringe benefits do they get?
So if, if they don't give fringe, it's what we have to pay, right, because we have to pay $5,000 on all our people, so have that, taxes in, we have to pay.
So it's not a fringe benefits, it's taxes?
Well, it's just classified as
Yeah, taxes are fringe, classified as fringe.
I believe they also get, you got to pay to the state, don't you, for students? So maybe because they're not co-op students, because we had to do it in a co-op.
They don't, they aren't in the retirement system, so we don't
Okay, because that's where I, I got lucky, I guess.
Yeah, you did get lucky, yeah.
And when
I did too, Darren, when I, I worked, and that's how I got into basic retirement.
But they made a lot of changes since, yeah.
When are we anticipating the start of these students?
Um, well, I
They're already going for the year, so this is just
Some of them have been going, it's just approval to keep the positions in place for these kids. I know Buildings and Grounds had a few guys come in and help over the breaks. Athletics is, the girls who they did have hired are super busy with their activities, so they may be changing out those students. No, Mr. Fairweather does have at least one kid working for him, I think, right now. So tag generally is like a summertime gig.
So we, I know we approved it last year in January, and I'm just trying to, like, is there, is there a contract that they signed? Like, is it official like that?
They're, they're student workers for $14, I mean
I know, but
They're interns, they come in, they do an onboarding process like others do, and then they work for us in turn in time sheets. And some weeks they work those hours, some weeks they don't, depending on their homework, if they're a marching band, or they have other things such as that, but it, they've been pretty productive for all of us, it's pretty, it's pretty great.
I know they were a big help over break, moving things around in Lockhouse, and they started with the construction work over there, they were, they're doing a lot of hauling things around, we have one coming in, they help paint the balconies. So they do, they get lots of stuff over break.
So the technology, I know how many people are, are in that department, which are five?
So they have the director, three people out in field, and then the secretary, so five total?
Yeah, and then what about the building and ground?
Uh, there's about 30 total custodial and maintenance.
No, I'm talking, I'm, I'm sorry, maintenance people, because
There's eight maintenance people, seven or eight.
I think, I think it would be best to bring a report back, maybe at the next meeting to give to them, put it in the memo for our school board meeting, so that they know how many people are working. These are really just the opportunities to give kids opportunities to work.
And I know that, and I welcome that, because that's what I always wanted, but I just want to make sure that we're, um, if we get questions out there, how to answer those questions and, and know the answers, not really, and when we direct them to you, well, at least know the answers, so that's why I'm just, you know
We'll add all of that for you guys
Okay.
in the next memo, that way we're not
That would be helpful.
guessing at the exact number, Greg to tell you if he was here.
Thank you.
So you're asking how many maintenance people there are?
Yeah, total maintenance, total, well, we already know the athletics, it's just, basically it'll be the technology, Buildings and Grounds, and Drama, that you don't have any, you have a teacher at the Drama.
And a, there's an assistant
Okay.
draft coach, as we're moving forward with, without someone.
And a vocal coach.
And a vocal coach.
Oh. So if we could maybe list all that, that would be wonderful. So we know where we stand. Thank you. Sorry for taking, sorry for taking up all the time.
So that's why, that's what the meeting's about.
Yeah, this is, this is where we hash it out, put it out, your questions, anybody else? Okay, Promise Navigators.
Um, so the job description for the Promise Navigator is attached to this, these are newly created additions. I'd love to have Miss Wesley Booney, so she's much more versed in this. So these are also important to know, these are grant-funded positions with the Community Schools Grant.
Essentially what they are, are community school coordinators. We're going to try to tap into the Promise Zone, since we have that great program here, and maybe at the end of going to their college time, that there's a job out there at the end part of it. This is from a grant that we wrote to bring these into the other, United Oaks already has one, with the United Way Grant, so it's the way to explain some of the great things that are going on at United Oaks to Web, Hoover, and the Junior High School. So the three navigators will go to those schools, and then myself and the community school coordinator at United Oaks will tend to oversee them and make sure that we work moving forward, that's what they are, and they are completely grant-funded for three years.
For three years?
And I, Ballmer will be, we're piloting, Southfield and Hazel Park are the ones that they've given the dollars to, to pilot. The other piece is that we're also working with Oakland County to bring more support into both the communities, as well as a pilot, and they're writing for Ballmers, and then normally how that works is that you rewrite again to continue that support, and you have to show measurable data. One of the nice things about the Ballmer grant is that they gave us the year's dollars upfront, and then we don't report until the next October, instead of all these quarterly reports that go along the way that right now we're doing with United Way, and so they're really trustworthy into us doing, right, what, what we've done, instead of a middleman in between there. So looking forward to getting this up off the ground, getting this started.
How much is the total grant?
Over the three years, it's $575 per year, and over the three years, it's $1.7 million. And it includes the Promise Navigators and their fringe, as well as there's a little pile of money for possibly doing some after-school programming, and some of those other things that we've done in the other schools. So the, the majority of it was for the Promise Navigators to get a person kind of in these schools, because we, we now see the success of that, so.
That's a fabulous grant.
It is a fabulous grant.
When would they be expected to start, this school year, or?
As soon as I can get them on board, we, we want to get this approved, and then I would like to head into or post, yeah, post, and then head into evaluation, I mean, interview. Got my principal hat off, there we go.
Isn't that what interviews are after?
Oh, yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments, no?
The job description, those two were just an example of what the job description looked like, the other two, both of you do an audio post, definitely very useful.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question before you. On the, on the job description, it says services to adhere to the community schools model. Do we have a model for the community schools?
We do, it's actually a kind of a, it, I, it has pillars, there's four pillars that kind of go with that. One is collaborative leadership, and there's extended day learning kinds of things, there's wraparound services, and then there's parent engagement, community engagement.
Can we get?
Absolutely. I did early on, I'm not even sure if he was on the board yet, but I've done a couple of presentations on community schools, and would be more than happy to share whatever you would like.
It's a national model, it's not a Hazel Park model, and we certainly can, we're, we're pleased to be piloting that for
Absolutely.
I'm thinking them, but some of the modeling comes from the United Oaks Community School, right, program, how that
United Oaks comes from the national model.
The national model, so when United Way came and said, hey, we'll give you these dollars if you follow this model, we said absolutely, and then, so we've kind of modeled United Oaks with that national model and, and putting those things in place.
That is actually a Ballmer-funded grant as well, but it's Ballmer through United Way.
Through United Way.
Right, and these, we're the only district other than Southfield that received this money that comes directly to us.
And we piloted it at United Oaks, so that we could maybe expand, and it's been pretty successful, so.
It's been very successful. There are a lot of good things about it, so.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Thank you very much.
And I will get that information before the next meeting.
Next week is good, we don't meet till the 27th, that's
We've got two weeks.
Yeah. Have a little time.
But it is your time to do your update, so a little link to an article will go right in this, the board agenda this week.
I've already finished them, like, yeah, I will
Perfect timing. Okay, so Finance, next, the audit update.
Yes, I can give you a little update, I spoke with our auditor earlier today, the principal that's on that. She is finishing the book right now, and it'll go up to her superiors for review. She is hopeful that it'll be ready by the 27th, but it may not be, and if it's not ready by the 27th, then she would ask that we have a meeting, Bev, you and I, and Crystal, and probably Matt, go through it, so that we can go ahead and get our FID completed, and get our dollars coming in, and that we bring it to February. So it just depends on the timeframe. She's also going to be, as
She's also going to be, as Bev asked questions about a forensic audit, she's going to give you a phone call, because when those questions are asked in a session, an auditor cannot not ignore the questions that will have it. So, she's going to give you a call. She's going to email you first, so watch your email, and then she'll ask what your specifics are, and she'll see if they looked in those areas, and to see if there's any weaknesses. So, that may delay the audit as well, because they can't finish that audit now, given the fact that I shared you with those comments and inserts.
Okay.
So, those should be coming through. And so, either way, hopefully, we'll get the FID done by February 1st, and then the presentation, I asked Matt about this morning, Matt Crystal, about the budget then for this year, the second... The first amendment of that budget. And we just have some grant dollars that we need to finish, that Stephanie and I, I submitted a grant this weekend, and Stephanie's submitting one as well. And once we get those in the system, then we'll be able to come back out and look and make sure the right numbers of people are in different spots, and see where we are on that, because we've, you know, removed individuals along the way this year.
Anybody have questions? No?
I just... This is a weird question, but I'm going to ask it. Do you know how much money we have in our account right now?
No.
I know, it's a weird...
We said that in February, we'd bring you an update of all the different... It's not just like a bank account, right? It's a variety of things that we would bring, the bond and all of that, and that's part of what the audit does. And I have to go on to say again that, you know, in June at this time last year, or June, not at this time, in June, it was shared with us that we... This budget was a half a million to the good, to all of us. And during negotiations, it also was shared in front of all of us that the budget was fine. It was a shock to all of us that revenues and such were not gotten into the school year and over again. And so, unfortunately, when you go back through emails and such, things weren't sent to anybody but one person, and so it's really difficult to kind of see where all of that is. And so, part of the amendment to the budget will be taking that revenue, that like, so for example, the idea money from the ISD was not given to us until October. And it might have been November, November. And we didn't know that it hadn't been given to us, because it had been journaled in a different way. They didn't tell anybody that they hadn't given it to anybody but one person, and it certainly wasn't me. And so, unfortunately, there's all of that that we'll be going through, and we need to take the time to do it correctly.
But to assure everybody, we have money to pay our bills and money to...
We're paying our bills. You're absolutely correct. And we took a $12 million note, but we are anxious to go ahead and get this finished by the end of the month.
And we have money to pay our salaries.
Oh, we're paying our salaries. Yeah, there's no concerns about paying. That's why we got the note.
That's what I wanted to be clear.
It was more than enough, yes.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to be clear. So, out of that note, we pay interest on that, correct?
We do pay interest on it, yep. Every... The longer we have it out, and so unfortunately, that's why we asked for help earlier this month, is to kind of get this moving faster, to have more hands in the piece, and we didn't have that. So, every delay causes more interest to come to the district.
And we can't move forward until we get this audit taken care of.
No.
All right.
And I want to go on to say again that no one in this group had knowledge of this, about where we were at. None of you? You were told exactly where we were? As in negotiations, we were told exactly that we were great. So, it's not that we're not great, it's just that this audit, we're number one on the metric sheet about where we are. We won't be number... We won't be one anymore, but then you will come back to where you were, you'll look at all your positions. It was always shared that last year, originally, if you remember those three-year plans, that we would go in deficit with the raises that we did, and we didn't, right? So, there's been adjustments every year with the money and with the grants and things that we have. We did say, though, next year is the year that we had concerns about with the raises that we did, and that this year we would adjust staffing as such. We'll be adjusting staffing, you know, as such for next year, and we'll have to work our way to continue to move forward.
Is that in March staffing? March, April?
March, April, yes. And we want to make sure that we have a good, solid knowledge of where we are with the new budget numbers of the raises that everybody's received, to make sure that we've really got a good sense. Here's what we think we need number-wise based upon our kids, and then here's where the dollars are, and here's what we have to do to get that. So, I hope... I'm hopeful that our new assistant superintendent will do it much like Dan Ronzick used to do, which is, here's early childhood, right? And here's that bottom-line number. You can see it with all the benefits that come here. Here's Hoover and their number, which I think was very helpful as we looked going forward. We also, I believe, will have negotiations with administrators?
Administrators.
Are custodians and maintenance up this year, too?
This was a three-year, I thought, and here is a fourth one for you, so not...
So, it's just administrators?
Yeah.
And then everybody next year.
Okay, anybody?
One of my big concerns is it... Remember, it reminds me of back way back, that the money was found that was supposed to be used for grants. It wasn't used for grants. It was used to pay general budget. Then we had to owe the government back the money for the grants, because we couldn't prove that, you know, these... This X was fought for. So, that's just my concern. You know, were we paying... Were Robin Peter... You know, that kind of thing, where I just hope that we don't find that, and I'm sure the auditors will...
The auditors will share that. I have not heard that information, but I also haven't gotten feedback from them.
Right.
I haven't tried to pressure them, because they're really working... You know, we're having to work on the backside to move items to where they're supposed to be.
Because it could be a continuing nightmare for you, with trying to figure out...
It is not something that anyone wants to come upon them and to find that information out afterwards. But fortunately, we've all been working together, Dr. Dolmetsch and myself, very strong in writing grants and relooking at where we are. Dr. Pozzi in Rodwell, really good at looking at the idea grant. We're probably cleaner than we've been in a long time. I don't believe that dollars were done in that way, because you have to get those dollars, and those dollars weren't drawn down out of the furs.
Okay.
So, in order to get your Title I dollars, you have to draw them down, and that was another thing that didn't happen. Those dollars weren't drawn down before September 1st. September 1st.
So, worst-case scenario, because don't we... Would normally get our second payment in February from the state?
No, the second payment would is December. November, December, January. So, as soon as we put the FID in, they will release our money. That is what Matt has found out. So, if she... If they get it completed next week, and that's all approved, I'll ask about to come in, we'll sit down, and we'll look at it, and then he'll put it into the FID, and then we'll approve the audit afterwards to get the state aid released.
But you're saying it may not be done until February? Maybe. Worst-case scenario... That's the same, worst-case scenario. So, then do we have... We have another month that we have to...
As soon as it won't go according to her. Now, it depends on the concerns that they are, and if they are prudent or not, and if they have already looked at it. Listen, audit's much different, right? You're looking at specific areas, and they've done a very deep dive, which is why this has taken longer, because they're brand-new. So, unless that sets us off in another direction, it should be finished at the next meeting or a little bit after the next meeting.
So, we don't anticipate having to wait a whole nother month? That's my point.
No, no, no. We might wait a whole nother month before it's presented to the public in a regular board meeting, but it might come to the committee of the whole next month. So, you have a chance to ask questions of the auditor, right? And then come through and have the budget aligned as well.
Okay.
And state aid payments are then released retro and in bulk.
Absolutely. You don't lose any money. It's just retro, and it comes out to you.
So, do you have to wait until the board approves to send the FID?
Not to do the FID, no. Which is why we said that if, when it's completed, like, if we don't make it by the next board meeting, if she doesn't get... Because she has to wait for people above her now to review all the data. She needs to speak with Mrs. Hinton and President Hinton. She has to speak with President Hinton. And then we'll sit down and look at it. So, if it's not at time in that meeting, we'll sit down with President Hinton and then get that released as soon as possible.
Anything else? No. All right. Nice to get some report. It's been a little while in-depth.
I think it's on all of our... It's on all of our minds, every day.
Oh, my God. Oakland-Livingston Human Resource Service Agencies, OLSA contract lease for Webster.
So, this is another thing that was dug up, that had not been signed and released yet, and there was additional concerns, because there's an extra room being used. Jason did negotiate the lease to go up, as you see in the lease, but they are using one more room for storage right now. They're saying they don't have dollars to pay for an extra room, and so I'm... We're going to leave them in that room for this year. If they use it next year, they'll be charged more for it. But you had asked before, all these things are signed, that they're brought to you, so it's being brought to you, because it should have been signed in August, and it was not. I found it in a box, and so this is the lease for them to utilize it. Mrs. Hinton, President Hinton and I had a conversation the other day about damage happening, and I spoke with the lead, Volshug, as well as Greg, and they're putting diaper wipes, the kids are putting diapers, there's some toys that are going down in there, and the purpose is, is because the doors are off there. And so, they want to put gates up. Greg is going to go over and talk with them about, do they want the bathroom doors placed back on in order to facilitate that? They are responsible for any additional costs that it cost us. Right now, it's our people's time, but I did let her know that if that continues, that we will have to charge them for that.
So, they want to put the gate across the bathroom?
Right. Right now, it's just a clock that's in front of there, so that they can see the kids when they go into the bathroom. I certainly understand that, right?
It's a childcare licensing mandate. The doors can't latch and close.
You can't have the doors, okay. So, they want to put the gate... Can you put the gate on for a childcare mandate?
The gate offers you line of sight, so you can. It's not restricting access, it's restricting view. So, a gate that was either, like a half-door that was lower, where it offered line of sight, or a gate that was like a traditional baby gate that you could see through would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that a half-door, a half-gate, I mean, half-door, that would be less cumbersome, I think, because the gate, you're sliding back, you know, the door's easier, but whatever.
I don't know what those doors are made of. The doors are still there, so there is a chance that, this sounds crazy, that we could cut the door in half and put a nice top on the top of it. I don't know.
Their kids are a lot younger than the preschool academy kids at Webster, which would probably give them pause, if I were to guess. I don't know that they would say no, but they have non-mobile infants as well, which makes the line of sight a little bit trickier. So, my guess is that if they were presented with the option, they would prefer something that was full sight-through.
Now, maybe gates have come a long way with the way they open and latch and... Yeah, that'll be their solutions that they have to come up with, not something that we're buying or paying for them. But I was... I did reach out, and I wanted to share that communication back with them. They've been nothing but wonderful to work with, other than...
It's more affordable than paying our plumber.
So, this lease that we're approving on Monday is for the 24, 25?
In two weeks. We're not coming on Monday. I'm not coming on Monday.
Oh, excuse me.
It's a holiday.
So, this is for the 24, 25 school year?
Yes, it is.
So, then we're going to get another one of these...
Yes, you will.
Hopefully, before September.
Yes, you will.
And then that could also... The square footage could increase if they want to pay for it. If not, it'll be the same. Okay, thank you.
Since it wasn't signed, have they paid? Like, did they get a monthly bill, or do they pay that on alternate?
No, they have not gotten a monthly bill, and we probably should look to see if they paid last year. Crystal, can't tell if we did that backtrack on that one, to see if they paid last year.
They would have to draw down federal funds, so I would have a hard time believing they didn't. But if it helps, they wouldn't have paid on time anyways.
I'm sure they're audited, too, right? So, I'm sure they would have caught it.
Yeah, that's true. Do they pay them every month, or do they pay like...
I think he sends them a bill. So, we'll... We haven't set that up about how we're going to do that yet. Haven't had that conversation. So, I'm looking at Crystal put it on our list.
In the paperwork, it listed like six separate payments or something.
Oh, yeah, it did. It did.
But I don't remember seeing those come in. Do you, Crystal? I don't. I don't remember seeing them come in. And I'm opening every piece of mail coming into this building, all the checks, everything.
So, they rent... And here's the date you should get them. It was a list.
They rent rooms to do Head Start program. I thought we did the Head Start program.
We lost it way before I came due to misappropriation of how we were doing it, of dollars.
So, they do Head Start, and they collect all the funds for it? Do we count the kids? Do we include them in our count?
And remember that preschool and GSRP are different than how you do count here, and so at some point, when we talk about staffing, we'll talk about, as a matter of fact, they're already getting ready to enroll for GSRP for next year now, because they've changed those mandates, and we already have our classroom numbers that were allocated for the GSRP side of things, which is early, you know, months early than what we're used to.
How many spots are they allowing for next year? Do you know by chance?
A hundred and...
At Oakland Schools?
We have seven classrooms of 16 students each.
I wanted to say 117, but I don't know if that's right or not.
I was trying to do my math with this one.
It's called calculator on the...
So, it should be like...
Seven times 16 kids?
Yeah.
112 as well. And then we'll be able to ask for more if we get more. And we run the five-day-a-week program, so we receive some benefit from that, and we're opening another classroom, so we may receive some benefit from that. We're working very hard to utilize every single grant that's out there.
That's still through Oakland Schools, correct?
Hi, anything else?
Good questions.
All right. Next one's check register and credit card statement.
Yeah, you might want to sit up there. Though I did try to look through to see if I was prepared. We'll see if we're prepared for you.
We could be here a little late, because I have 45 questions.
I'd encourage you to always send them ahead of time.
That was a joke.
Board 101.
I'm only joking.
Send the questions ahead of time.
That was a break-in for Crystal. She's looking at me like, there.
I was like, Derek, you got me beaten on the queen, extra queen.
My anxiety is like with River River right now.
Sorry for the anxiety.
I don't know. But I do send a lot. But I didn't send them this time, because I didn't have a whole ton.
But I didn't send them this time, because I didn't have a whole ton.
You didn't have what?
I didn't have as many as normal, so I didn't send them.
Well, I think you're also starting to get to see some of the same ones.
Well, I think it helped for me anyways, because it was more detailed. We went back to our original report.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Just ask and you receive.
I think it's just been, it's been changed over the years. The number one, what, which is why Matt told me...
Okay, we're ready.
How do you want to start?
Yeah, I can, my first one is the swimming pool repairs. Just, it says swimming pool for four hundred and fifty dollars, first page. I was just kind of curious on what that exactly was. First page? The first page?
Page one of the detailed check register.
We did have some work done on the swimming pool. I don't know if that's specific. We still have a, where the water is coming in into those offices. And so actually, Birzani has not gotten back to me on that conversation yet. But there's, it does not, it floods the main office there and does not drain properly. So we still have some tile work that we need to be doing on that.
Oh, so that's all related to tile work?
I can't answer this one, but...
This one had to do with the sensors and then the relam of the tube of pumps.
The sensors are, we had to replace the sensors because of the doors being put in and redoing the doors into their, the pump, I can't answer.
Curriculum association, the twenty-three, page two. Is that i-ready?
Getting started training online webinar? No. Stephanie, the twenty-three thousand, is that elevation?
Yes.
Look up here, it's elevation. It's the Elevation EL program that we purchased last month. It's the strategies, the data, the seminars, the training. That's for our EL students.
So the Imagine Learning on page nine, is that the extra curriculum we approved? For math?
Yes.
Yes, that is Imagine Learning is for grades six through twelve.
And Crystal, can you repeat that? Because they won't be able to hear you, Stephanie, back there online.
I'm sorry. It was for the math, you said six through twelve?
Yes.
Yes.
Page through five is i-ready.
I'm on page eleven, Our Time Youth Radio Training Coaching and Supplies, eight thousand dollars.
Yes, and if you are really interested, I will be on the radio on Thursday night with this as well, as they'll be interviewing me. This is our out-of-school-time grant funding, and we're doing it with the junior high this next semester. So Thursday night, tune in.
It's on the radio?
It's on the radio.
What station?
Podcasting and podcasting.
So where, can you hear it?
On, I'll tell you.
I've got it. No, go ahead.
WKRP in Cincinnati.
Yes. Hazel Park, it's in Southfield.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I have the directions where I'm going on there.
It is AM fourteen sixteen.
AM fourteen sixteen, or sixty?
Sixty, six zero.
And that came out of the out-of-school grant?
We're going to have to get ourselves another out-of-school grant. Got a lot of great things.
Ellison Lucas, five hundred and twenty dollars mileage on page fourteen. I saw some mileage paid, like dance competition, was that related to that?
That is the student for, I'm not sure everyone will have it, it's in the name.
Yeah, no. Because we're reimbursing a parent for driving their child.
W P O N fourteen sixteen on the AM dial. Five six, and the podcast will be at six thirty-seven. I've got it reported, so five six.
Internal controls maintenance on the door, door at maintenance garage. What happened?
What page is that?
That's the same page fourteen.
Oh, I think that's part of the gate.
I was gonna, that's the gate that we approved?
Petty cash for the dance comp, is that just like startup money?
Yeah, they needed it for the doors. And they returned it for deposit. We were tight on that.
Yep. Big Top Party Rentals, thirty-six hundred.
Oh, you understand page?
On page sixteen.
Did we order tables? No, I don't know what the Big Top Party Rentals is.
And then the same page, page sixteen, the last one, Constellation. I'm just kind of curious of what it was, because it was like all the buildings.
Energy. DTE and Constellation.
So we have both? Why do we have both?
Or consumers and Constellation. Gas and electric.
Should be consumers for gas, DTE for electric. I don't know.
I think...
He has need for cost savings that Jason had funded with Constellation.
It's because we purchased therms.
Because you purchased, I'm sorry?
Thermes. You purchased energy.
Let me buy it at that time. Gotcha.
Actually, Bob Moore summed up on that a long time ago.
You purchased thermostat, is that what you said?
No, thermes, like you, it's, like you have dual, it's the amount of the energy for a certain cost. And Bob Moore had us redo that a long time ago. If you remember correctly, those of you that were on, we had one person, and then we brought these other people in for better savings. And it's, it's a, it'll either do well for you, or it won't do well for you, right? Depending on when you buy, purchase it at.
It's like pre-buying your energy, right? Rafton Schools, page seventeen. Edison Service Conference?
That, is that a training certification?
Where's that? Crisis Prevention CPI. Yes, that's CPI membership fee.
I, this was just a question, because I didn't know what it was. But what is drone coaches?
That is another after-school program, our drone program at the junior high with the out-of-school-time grant. Again, one of those things that we're going to miss if we can't find additional funds for all the fun things the kids have been doing. It's not a great opportunity.
Competition in February and March. I can attest, my son is in the near and middle.
Detroit native son, GSTG, I just didn't know what those representations.
After-school program, newspaper.
Is it, where is that at?
Junior high.
That's what we had to copy up last meeting.
He's a, he's a grandparent, right, of students here.
My last one is KS Ventures, just the sixty-five hundred HBHS maintenance services.
So those are just maintenance supplies. And Jason Anderson keeps that updated based upon what the building's needs are. And I actually didn't know this after ten years, that our painter also orders all supplies in a warehouse. And we're looking to utilize FMX for this to scan it and do some other things that are more helpful than having someone go and check that out and count it every time. So we'll have more next month after we do some additional training.
That's it for me.
Okay. You answered a lot of mine. How do you, I must have had a lot of the same questions. This front thing, the budget to actual, this is for the whole entire, like, when does this start? It's as of twelve, twenty, thirty-one, twenty-four? When does it start?
It's for the fiscal, fiscal year, but that's just, I'm pulling it toward the end of the month, to show...
So this is one month, or this is still for the, from January to now?
What page are you looking at, Debbie?
The very front of the packet.
It was page twenty-three in the package.
Oh. Where it says Revenue and Expenses, Hazel Park Schools Budget to Actual by State Revenue and State Function. I just wondered when it started, if this was the whole year's worth, or if this is...
So it is the fiscal year. And then what's updated is the accommodations and the actual for the, for the month and the days of balance. This ran every month and updated.
Okay. So the bottom lines that are at the bottom is current?
Oh, the, all the formats. Here's the original budget, but this will be changed. This is the, what we've budgeted. And then there'll be the amendment that'll come in here, and then this is how much we've spent in there or received, and the balance, and then the percent of that.
Right, so I, so I just, it's through Jan, December thirty-first. So when did it, when did we start this page?
July first.
Thank you. Okay. She answered the swimming pool. She answered that one. Sorry. What is hash bubby unisex canvas high?
What page are you on?
That is on page seven. I'm just curious as to what it is. It came from Amazon. Hash bubby, about halfway down the page seven.
I want to double-check, is that Edison?
No, it looks like it's Red Lips.
I can't answer that.
It might be nine four six nine, it might be for...
Dance?
One of the cheerleaders, whether it's...
Hash bubby unisex. Hash bubby.
Hash bubby, that's what it says.
Unisex.
Canvas, and then it says high, and there might be more, but...
This is what I usually do when I get some of these bills. They're shoes.
Oh, they're shoes?
Those are shoes.
All right.
So they're probably dance, they're probably cheer shoes, if individuals couldn't purchase them.
Okay. And what, what are, we're purchasing blankets from a music, the very next section?
A blanket purchase order means that this is to cover anything along that time. So it's not actually a blanket, like, sometimes we do a blanket purchase order for all the food, that's not what we were doing, but all the food that, that they want to order, and they're expecting they're going to order like twenty-five thousand. So you have a blanket purchase order, so you don't have to do one, but they draw from that purchase order.
Gotcha. If you do get any blankets, bring them here on the twenty-seventh, please.
I am not cold, I don't know about you guys, I am not cold.
Several, what did we buy for twenty thousand five hundred and eight, six foot by forty foot by one?
What page?
Page eight, near the bottom.
Those are probably the wrestling mats.
They're what?
Those are the wrestling mats. That'll be on display Wednesday and Saturday, if you want to come and see them in our gym.
And what's the online course, NW?
NWEA?
No, NK, or WK, BK.
What page?
Right above the wrestling mats.
Oh, Crisis Prevention, that's still our CPI. We utilize CPI in UK room, right, for de-escalating students.
Got you. This, oh, five PM, I wrote it down. What day are you on the radio?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Six o'clock is the podcast, and the other one's at five.
I didn't write down Thursday, that's on. You answered those. ULS, I'm on page fifteen. ULS renewal, what's a ULS?
Specialized curriculum. Am I correct, I'm correct? Yes, okay. Yes.
What do we rent a porta potty for?
The visitor's side of the football stadium, so we didn't have people coming that way, and when we had kids and other individuals running back into the schools. It would have been nice if they'd built one on that side for people that need to, especially with that practice field over there, and the softball and baseball fields.
That's true.
We might be close to going with my questions, what are these ones? DFC grant, page twenty-one.
The DFC grant is the coalition grant, dollars towards the coalition grant.
Do we get it first and give it to them?
They run everything through us. They've been doing that for probably about eight years. But the DFC grant is new for us. There's a local one, it's like thirty grand, and we've gotten a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year now, so.
But, let me see if I have anything on this. This is, I'm in the, this, from Huntington now? Under Jamie, evalidate for two thousand dollars?
I looked that up, I think that's a software thing for...
No, that was the approved jersey fund.
Oh. That's somebody's, that was approved for somebody's home. They're, they're red.
Bureau of Education in Belleville, Washington, on page ten. Nope, seven, seven out of ten. It's all in the middle of Oakland Schools, and then one is Bureau of Education. Sorry, I was just curious.
Two ninety-five conference.
It's a conference?
I, I don't know, I'm kind of looking, Stephanie, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, Bureau of Education, Bellevue, Washington. Stephanie has a spreadsheet for that.
Okay, two more questions while she's looking. Christine Heron Weisman's Theatrical.
That's for drama.
Oh, she does drama too?
Well, she is, I would prefer it to be in the front office, but yes.
She also went to CVS, I was a little curious about that. For eight dollars, that's why...
It's probably something for, we can look.
Band-aids or tape.
Yeah, we, we actually checked through all of these and had a double-check. Ryan went through them first, made sure we had all the receipts, and then I took a look at them from there. I just don't recall what this one was.
Okay, the last one's Enterprise. Is that?
What page?
The nine.
Same page, just under Ryan, named it, the teacher.
Shirley Wilson. Oh, yes, we had a student that caused damage to a staff member's car, and we paid for the, paid for that as well as the car rental during that time.
What happened?
Student was upset and after broke several windows, went after someone's car.
Sent it to the high school?
No, Edison, yes.
Okay, are we holding the parents liable for that?
We do send a bill every time there's damage to the school. We don't always receive it, but yes, we send a, we send, that's, that's part of the fund that you get extra, right, you take it out of that. Yes, we send a bill every time.
So that's it, so we're in the Bellevue, which some, that you're looking into.
She's looking.
We can put this over here.
The only question that I was wondering is, is there, maybe you could put it on the Google, in the Google, our Google soft that we have, a document, what the numbers are. So maybe then I don't, because I kind of, I answered a lot of my own questions by, I'm just looking at the six hundred, or the one fifty, or, because I knew what school it was going to. I was just wondering, you know, if these numbers, I know, correspond to grants or whatever, is there a way we, you could, you know, make a listing of what?
Like a chart?
We have one, I believe it's in your file already. We've done it before, and so we'll pull that back out again. But we can't implement that here.
No, 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 I don't want it here. But I did try to cross-reference, but it didn't look like that sheet was updated.
We'll take a look at it.
So that's why I, you know...
I saw it the other day when I was going through some stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's the best, that's, that's, it was great.
And they, they had us do that before fifteen bucks.
Yeah, when I came across that, I'm like, oh, this is cool. I knew what Edison was, and I knew, you know, and then it all jived together, and I'm like, okay, well, that's cool. It's the only question I had.
Okay, all set? Thank you, Crystal. Okay, we're under other grants.
So this is new, that we've been doing the last couple meetings to kind of give you an update of all the different grants that are coming in and out of Hazel Park. Some of them state, some of them aren't. So this month, we got the thirty-one A five, which is K through five. We are utilizing this to help purchase our i-ready. So this is to kind of help them with initial assessments for, so instructional thirty-five A. Any questions about that? The next one is the community schools for one point seven two five from Belmer, with a description of what that is in there for all of you. And hopefully, we'll continue to grow that and get a good foundation and district leadership team. If any of you are interested in joining our district leadership team, let us know. We're going to try to hopefully have community engagement be that, but let us know if you want to be a part of that. part of that.
So that's in addition to the other, the, uh, Promise Navigator?
No, that isn't, that isn't.
Oh, that is it?
This is the grant, yes, and then in there, right, we've given you all the grants, as you asked. Um, twenty-two, um, I is School Transportation Fund, we had a whopping ninety-five hundred dollars, uh, to reimburse us on general ed transportation, that was extra dollars that were given, whoop, whoop. Um, our GSRP is a different fund, uh, just so you know, but this is a different section. Thirty-one AA is per pupil funding for mental health, our initial amount is fifty-five thousand, seven forty-four, it was over seven hundred thousand last year, this is one of the cuts that were given in the state budget, and, uh, I believe we're closer to almost four hundred thousand, we're supposed to get in the spring, but that's not been released yet, so, this is just the initial, um, monies that they've given us. And we got four hundred and ninety-five dollars in school board, uh, reimbursement, um, I'm tidy, we were able to download your, um, transcript, and I'm going to try to upload that and see if they'll accept that, uh, if not, we'll have to go to three times the charm, and, uh, see what we can get. So every time you take a class, please send us your completion, and if it's on the list of reimbursements, you need to send that completion email that shows it's there, then we fill it out and upload that in here, so all of these grants that you're seeing are ins and outs, right, we have to write the grant, some of it takes just a minute, some of it takes hours, some of it takes days, and then we have to update all of those information, and then the business department has to do, uh, for many of them that doesn't come through State Aid, has to do, uh, expenditure reports, and Matt has Crystal going on a monthly basis now, working on some of those, instead of waiting till the end of the year, so. Any questions about grants right now? We're working on a couple more.
Did we skip MDE thirty-five D? Or did I just not, did I zone it for a second?
I skipped thirty-five D, uh, that is, thank you, Orton Gillingham, uh, Dr. Gomich wrote this grant, so we have, uh, fifteen people that are able to go and receive Orton Gillingham training, that's another, uh, more significant training for individuals for reading, uh, through our MTSS Tier Three process.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nice job, that's a lot of work.
We have a good team.
Lot of work, good team, right, all those grants, and then respond and give reports, lot of work.
Can, can we go back to the twenty-one E for a second? I was looking at the backup for it.
Twenty-one E or twenty-one I, School Transportation?
Yeah. Why are some of these schools like Troy getting sixty-seven, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, and we're getting like ten thousand?
Because they transport and we don't, we have very little that we're transporting, so, a majority of our, our transportation is happening in GSRP, and it's happening in Special Ed, and so those are two very different funding mechanisms, and so our other funding will come here, as you provide more fun, transportation, you'll get more funding.
So does this offset, like, the kids that we pick up from web?
Yes, it'll help offset that. And, um, they just sent this big survey out, like, your reminder that categoricals are just really difficult, because every single thing, you have to stay right up on top of it, which is why Stephanie has a spreadsheet, and, um, that kind of follows through for us, that, you know, what's happening, when it's happening, whenever, whoever gets a grant, they send it, and Stephanie places it in that spreadsheet, because you got to stay on top of that, to make sure all that stuff, so it's really, really a team effort for us to make sure the ins and outs are happening, but, um, it would be nice if every single thing we did, we didn't have to go in the systems, which are really clunky, uh, submit the grants, and then, you know, it'd be nice if they just gave it a pot of money versus having us write all these individual grants, it's, it's really, it, you know, I want you to think about this, we write so many grants as opposed to ten years ago, I don't know how we would do it with the makeup that we had then, um, we couldn't, we, we couldn't write this number of grants, we would be missing out on things.
What do you mean by the makeup we had then?
It used to be me, and one person in the curriculum office, and the business office, uh, then Shirley and stuff did items up there, if we didn't have the expansion that we have now, it was a Special Ed Director too, we wouldn't be able to write for the grants that we'd have to bring services into the kids, because it takes a lot of extra time, and Stephanie and I are often working outside the school, they, on the weekends, um, to complete this.
Okay, the next thing is Board Calendar Dates and Times. So who would like to go first proposing the time of our meetings?
Hi.
The dates, and, or both, whatever.
I would like to start all the meetings at six o'clock. Uh, and then for the regular board meetings, when we have presentat, or at least the Student of the Month, the Student of the Month can do like six o'clock, and then we can take a couple-minute break, because they all run out, and it's very distracting, and the other people are speaking to us, and everybody else is getting up, and, and I'm not saying they can't go out, but it's very distracting, so we'll do the Student of the Month at six, we'll take a couple, couple-minute break and let them leave where it's not so distracting, and then at six-thirty, we do the actual business, or whatever time. Because I have to leave work every day early, at least ten minutes, which is in the lot, but when you do it three times a month, it kind of ends up, according to my boss.
I kind of like that, I, I do.
And I don't, see, I'm sorry, I don't think six-thirty is going to give enough time for the student of the month, though.
From six to six-thirty, you don't think that's enough time?
No, I don't think so, because the last time it went on for more than a half hour.
Not, no.
We had a bunch of other
We had other things coming, they don't always come.
We usually only have one kid from each school.
It usually takes about fifteen minutes.
Because I, I'm more concerned about, uh, the people that have kids and having run around, pick up, you know, pick them up from school, and, and, you know, and coming from work, because you're usually work till five, right? And I think our meeting should start at seven, like they used to be, I think that gives you some breathing room, and even if you're picking up kids, it gives you some breathing room to, you know, pick them up, settle them down, feed them, you know, I mean, that's just my
The hard part of that is that then they have to come back this way. Like, depending where they are, like, I, I know she could attest to this, like, there's a lot of times where the student is a student of the month, and having it at five or five-thirty is easy, because when they pick them up, come here, if they're like at Latchkey or something, they come right here, they get done, then they go home and do dinner, so pushing it to seven
That's a good point, yeah.
Not the ideal, in my opinion.
That's a good point.
April.
I interrupted Heidi, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
To be honest, I don't have super strong feelings either way, if we choose to start at six, I would be fine with it, if we chose not to, I would be fine with it, so, I don't want to be a, a bellwether here.
But we just, your opinion, that's
Yeah, I mean, that's, the, the, the five and five-thirty that's proposed is okay with me, and honestly, six is okay with me too, so, I am, I don't want to stand in the way of somebody else's needs on this one.
I agree, I'm in the same boat as April, I don't, I don't have anything, you know, it's, it's late enough, five is late enough for me, that I don't have conflicts at work or anything, so, five, six, it doesn't matter to me, if it's going to be beneficial for other trustees, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, it's not even the trustees, it's, we work for the public, so what is convenient for the public?
Right.
Um, I think if most people get off between four and five, some people are five-thirty, if we do the Student of the Month at six, like Debbie said, take break, and conduct, then come back and conduct our business at six-thirty, I think that's reasonable, I think that's more convenient for the public.
And I, and I'm open, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I, I just want to be, be a part of it, be here for everyone.
This is out of the, my, be a better school board member, make it convenient for citizens to attend, meetings are held in an accessible place, at a time when the public can be there, usually in the evenings, so that was that comment. I like six and six-thirty, uh, five, sometimes Heidi works till five-thirty, some
I work till five, and it's, like, today was awful trying to get here. I called you and I said I might be late, all stressed out.
Well?
So is anybody opposed to six o'clock?
No. Not at all.
No.
So we, all three of them will be at six o'clock?
I'm okay with five-thirty and the other two. If everybody else is.
The workshops and committee of the whole.
Yeah.
I'm, I'll watch, five-thirty for
Five-thirty for, um
Workshops?
Workshop, and the committee of the whole, because the committee of the whole is just a, pretty much discussion, and that's being televised, so if they are that interested, they could tune in on YouTube.
I just said six o'clock for everything, because I'm old and I don't remember. It's all different times, I forget.
We can do six o'clock for
We'll teach you how to set alarms, Grandma.
I know, my kids have taught me a lot of stuff.
Are the dates okay?
I didn't, I didn't have any conflicts with dates if we're going to go around, they were, I didn't notice any on holidays either.
So, we'll vote on the twenty-seventh, and it looks like six and six-thirty, think about the five-thirty, I'm not against the five-thirty either, uh, for committee of the whole, but, um, just keep that in mind, as that
If, if we're going to publish, I would like to still I think we should start at six and just construct the agenda, so that Student of the Month can come first, because we did have a couple times this year where there was confusion regarding the five or five-thirty time, and I'm a bit worried if, you know, somebody fires up the website and has that big, like, the Board of Education will meet at six-thirty PM, that Student of the Month isn't going to come late, if somebody's checking on it, I think
No, that's why, six o'clock is the start time, but, if that comes first, then we take, just come in a break, so they can clear out if they're going to clear out.
Yeah, that's what I think, we just take a quick recess, I think we still publish the meeting for six PM.
Yes.
And make sure that they're captured as a part of it.
I agree.
And then, you know, we sort of agreed to recess until six-thirty or something at the time, but, publishing six-thirty as the meeting time, I think will be confusing for anyone that's coming for special purpose.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
So it just should be published as six?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we'd be better off that way, less confusing.
Plus, now, we know Debbie might not remember to come.
That's right.
And then the dates, um, I would like to not have those workshops every single month. I wrote down, um, the dates of them, and, like, March third, March seventh, March fifth, but June, August, maybe Septem, no, no, me, no workshop in June and August, no workshop, maybe in September, uh, but the days, that's the second Monday and the fourth Monday, so, so those work for everybody.
Can you tell me which ones were taken off, again?
Well, I, let's hear what they think, maybe they think we need all those workshops.
I think we should just leave them on there.
We kept them as placeholders.
And then if we have a topic, then we can utilize them, if not, then we just cancel the meeting.
I would agree with that, I think, last time we talked, we agreed to keep them as placeholders, and schedules are difficult, if we could hold the day and just have it be, you know, a Board of Education workshop if needed, at least we know we're available.
That's fine, that's, makes sense.
I don't want to come every month either, I'm with you, but if we do have to, or if we even need the opportunity for a special meeting or something like that, at least we know that we're open, because we have it scheduled.
Okay, and so are we going to, we're going with five-thirty Committee of the Whole and six for meetings, because we'll vote on it next time, but that way it can be all contended up.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Committee of the Whole and workshops at five-thirty?
At five-thirty. And then the regular meeting at six.
Mm-hmm, sounds great.
Um, in April, what is, we have the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth?
I just saw
Is that because of the break?
Mm-hmm, ask which one you wanted.
Oh, right, I'm, I had it written here, I didn't say it, so
I said the twenty-first, to keep it all on line. Because I think if we have a regular meeting on the seventeenth, and then we wait till the twenty-eighth, and we have one on the nineteenth, I think that's a big gap.
Yeah, I think the twenty-first is the day we come back from a long weekend,
It's Easter Monday, which is why
Yeah.
Uh, the question was, when I was going through here, um, that's why, uh, I said twenty-first, or did you want the twenty, just because Are we off that day? We are not off that day, but
I think typically the Fridays are bigger conflict than the Monday.
When does, when does spring break start?
Spring break is back in March.
Oh, it's in March?
Yes, it's the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth.
But Easter is at Sunday?
Yeah, we just have the long break, half day to seventeen, we're off the eighteen, then we come back.
Good Friday, they're closed on the eighteenth.
So it's twenty-first?
Yeah, I think the twenty-first is fine.
Twenty-first works for me.
All right, good. That one's left yesterday than I thought it was. Uh, let's see, what's next? Board of Education Committee Appointments. Again, we have to listen to all the committees that we, we've had in the past, and we have Committee of the Whole, but we still would get reports on, uh, policy, personnel, et cetera, and Committee of the Whole, so those who are standard, wanted to, uh, really get into their enrollment, and have their enrollment committee report, um, as a regular report.
Whoever printed this first page is.
Now we have Ruth Gacy. What is honoring Hazel Park contributors, I don't think we've ever done that.
We did, uh, if Darren was on it, and so when individuals, uh, it was a committee that we came up a couple years ago, right, when individuals wanted their name on the wall, or, um, that a building named after them, this is the venue that they could bring it to, so if they came to the board and said, I want the podium named after Dr. Croupy, then, um
I'm sorry, was that the Ruth Gacy, or was it something else, or was it?
Honoring, honoring, um
Yeah.
Remember?
Yeah, I remember, I thought the Ruth Gacy was for, uh, giving shoes to kids that needed them.
Ruth Gacy is for giving shoes, but we were talking about the honoring contributors that, that's
Yeah, I'm with you.
Remember, we haven't had any for a while?
Yeah.
I was on it, it's like, I don't remember, I'm on it under twenty
Yeah, we wrote the directions for it, and then, I, we haven't had any for a couple of years.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty.
I apologize, I, okay, I didn't know where
So, are we keeping it?
I think so, I think you need, you need that, if people start coming in and want everything named after, you guys need to have a process that, I mean, that's the same thing I mentioned also, um, guys, about the process about who gets up on the walls, I mean, the more processes you have in place, you don't have to go back to try to figure out how it was done in the past when it's not written down.
And I think it helps Dr. Croupy with, um, not being the sole person saying yea or nay to, you know, dedicating this room to Darren Fox, or, you know, something like that.
As long as I get the podium.
Yeah, but, I mean, I do, I do believe that helps, and I think everybody in the committee when we, when we did meet, was in the same agreeance with it, and it just made sense.
It's easier to have it and not use it than it is to need it and not have it.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, so, I guess they stay as they were, and having the enrollment back in. So, oh, the liaison appointment, that's different. So, we did the museum in the past, I don't know if you want to put a person to attend their meetings, uh, library board, did we ever do Hazel Park Library?
No, not since I've been here, doesn't mean that we haven't, just mean to.
When we were in Lansing, um, and they asked who was the chair to do the voting, it was Melissa, I don't see that on here.
Yeah, is the, I think, isn't that Oakland County School Board Association Government Relations Committee?
I don't, probably didn't update this.
I don't think so, because it was through MASB, Michigan School Board Association, it wasn't through Oakland Schools, it was when we were in Lansing. I don't, I just don't see that on here.
No, I remember, because the, we didn't get to vote.
Right.
We could just watch the delegate assembly.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, do you want me to look into that for next meeting? You're asking for the MASB delegate? Yeah.
Yes.
I, I, uh, yes, I'll look into that.
You know, I don't see on here, there's two, I believe it's two meetings at Oakland You know, I don't see on here, there's two, I believe it's two meetings at Oakland Schools a month. I, I, I really fell down on looking that up.
On the back here, Government Relations?
The government's, yeah, I was thinking that was...
You have to name somebody for the liaison and someone for the government.
It was, um...
Could be a D E I, I think they got rid of that.
And we all know who was the liaison for many years.
Was the faculty inclusion?
The bottom one?
Was that three, but?
This is Oakland.
That's no, no longer there. They don't have this.
Oh, right, they don't have the D E I.
Yep.
But they have the legislative meeting on Wednesdays, but I don't know the time. I didn't look any of that up.
I think this is the Government Relations. Do you want me to clarify it?
I think it's two.
Yeah, some of it relations on the second page on the right here. Right here. Liaison and the government, the back one page. Right there.
Okay.
Would you like me to clarify or do you need to clarify when those meetings are?
Let's see. The first one is the first Wednesday of each month from six-thirty, seven to eight PM.
I don't think these have been updated for years.
Second one, you don't think?
No.
Okay, so...
I don't know where it is or not. I don't think we've had somebody go. I think we should. But we can clarify those meetings.
Okay, that would be great. And then on the twenty-seventh, I'll appoint those representatives. I know Debbie would like to do the legislative one. So if anybody else wants to be an Oakland School representative at their monthly meetings, let me know. Then we'll do the appointment on the twenty-seventh.
Can I pick and choose lots of stuff on this or do I just pick and choose one? Like, can I pick it if I wanna be on the enrollment committee or if I wanna be on the?
Yes, you know.
Curriculum committee?
Just...
We don't have a curriculum committee anymore. You certainly can have one, but we don't do that anymore. We bring it to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so there's none that, what else is not on here anymore? You said, oh, the D E I's not on here anymore? You said they don't have it anymore?
No.
What else don't we have anymore?
The District Leadership Team, we don't do anymore. The Camp Hazelwood Committee, we haven't done. Erickson Building Committee, this was the Historical Committee. School Improvement, we don't do. So we'd love to have one of you consider being on the Title One team that we are gonna, but I don't know that that really goes out here that we have a Title One on it. We'd love to have somebody that wants to spend time with us for the Title One on it. That'd be fun. I'd like to do that.
Anybody have an interest on it, on a certain committee that?
Um, I, do you want us to email you? I think that's what we decided last meeting.
So, what about the, um, suspension committees and all of that?
Sorry.
What suspension committee?
Chris, when we were...
Discipline Committee.
Discipline Committee, thank you.
What discipline committee? On here? Is that one on here?
No, when we were in the discipline hearing. Oh, 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 yes.
Oh, we certainly, you guys can appoint that here if you would like to appoint the discipline. That's just a superintendent committee for people coming back. What is the real name of that?
How about I compile a list?
How about we compile it up for you?
A simple, easy list and then we'll work off of that. What's new, we don't, let's not put anything on there we don't have anymore.
Would you like us to clean this up or what? She's getting that handed us anymore? This way? Okay. Yeah, this was Rachel's, believe it or not. Still Rachel's name.
We can put the Title One on there. We can put the Discipline Committee on there, um, Representation. So it's a little bit more.
So now that we kind of have the description though, so this was good because we have a description. Sorry for interrupting. Um, so you would, you would send the same as had Ruth Gacy, two people. Uh, Oakland Schools, what, to how many people that we're putting on each thing?
Yes.
Well, no, that's, I'm just saying so that when we respond, we know we need three or four. Well, I'll never five, but.
I don't know if it'll come this week. So I'll have to look at it after we do it. We might get it done before I meet with her tomorrow or, um, depends on what tomorrow morning raises.
Okay.
And then it can come out to you in your board update and then she can make the decision.
I think it would be nice to know the commitment, like Ruth Gacy, don't, really, that's a phone call and a, or an email discussion. It's to help people with, um, things that are not academic.
Emergency needs, right?
Uh, pardon?
Isn't emergencies?
A lot of emergency needs, yes.
Buying a refrigerator, paying their, paying their rent or the dentist or, but it's always just a one-time thing.
Yeah, this year we were fortunate enough to help somebody not lose their home at Christmas time.
Awesome.
And, um, it was the second one, right around there it was.
Uh, I think the athletic injuries.
Oh, yes, we had somebody that didn't have insurance when their child was injured and our insurance, uh, only pays up to ninety dollars a visit.
So who sat on those calls from the board?
Deb and W, Debbie, yes, sat on it for last year. I just gave them a call. We talked about it and away we went.
I can see to Deb's point, if we are gonna put together a more comprehensive list, it might be helpful to know just the expected commitment. Or specifically, I see one on here that won't be anymore, but it still, it says it meets Tuesdays at six forty-five AM.
Oh, that's the, yeah, that's gone.
I need to know if it's at six forty-five AM, okay?
We did a lot of work on that meeting.
That's really important.
That's important thing. That's, you need to know those things.
We had some early risers at that time.
If you want me to meet in the middle of the night, you need to let me know ahead of time, okay?
Yeah, that is very much so.
Whatever you think.
You can call me. You can't look at me.
All right, just let, let me get it a little bit more organized. We said six forty-five off of that.
Thanks, Deb.
Uh, board protocols. Anybody have any objections or suggestions, corrections, additions?
I do, I do, I do.
This is what we function by. This is, a lot of it is condensed of the board policies into a little different form that's easier for us.
Um, I'm wondering, um, Madam President, if we could make some suggestions in our cabinet level of some changes for you for the yearly board calendar agenda, bring it back to you. Like, maybe there's some adjustments we might do procedural-wise.
Um, yeah, that's a good idea. I compared it to one from two years ago. It's pretty similar. And I thought, what do we have on there now that we didn't have or vice versa?
Yeah, we, we've changed it.
Updating it. The calendar each month is in here.
Okay. If I may, this also helps understand how to communicate to you. Each board is a little different and might want something in a different way. And so we can't give that to you if we don't know. And so it's just really important, the communication protocols of what you would like or not like.
So will you do that before the twenty-seventh?
And you'll see.
Do we review it on the twenty-seventh and then vote on it at the next meeting?
Right.
That's fair.
Is that normally how it goes with these?
Usually you already vote on it at the organizational meeting.
We opted at the organizational meeting to table it today.
Can we talk about changes right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the, right, are we vote on this next month or on the twenty-seventh?
Well, Amy said she was gonna make changes to the calendar.
We'll share those to you ahead of time, only based upon what reports make sense in the flow for the cabinet team. Not something you guys want, but what may make more sense.
Okay.
Like, in February, we're gonna bring the three-year plans. In March, we will bring the handbooks or the opposite. No, that's...
What do you mean, three-year plans?
Remember we had three-year plans in?
Yeah, I remember. We, we didn't really follow them. They're up this year, so are we gonna get those in?
You are.
Awesome.
Okay, so currently these look okay to everybody.
No, basically.
May I just, my suggestion would be to increase the time of the, uh, of the public discussion to five minutes for each one. I know it seems long, but really five minutes goes by fast. And I think that we need to hear what the people have to say as, you know, we were all elected on the board and, uh, it's just a suggestion. Um, it was that, it used to be that Mr. Atkins would just let it go, no time limit. And he would just bang the gavel if he, you know, if they were getting too much into people talking about certain staff members. I think that's where the direction needs to be, is that the president needs to make sure that, you know, it's controlled at, um, at the level, you know, at the podium, just like she did, um, this past meeting when somebody in the audience almost tried to speak out and she said, "No, you can't do that. This is not your time." I mean, that kinda stuff has to happen in order to run, you know, the meeting. I, I think just sometimes, like the students, sometimes we have students that are here and they need a little bit more time. I, I just, uh, that's just my personal opinion. But I am open to anything else.
I agree with that. That was one of my changes to, um, that we need, the public has voiced on numerous occasions that three minutes is just not long enough. Um, so, and then one minute at the end, they're like, why bother? So...
And we don't get that many people in the audience anymore. I mean...
I would encourage you to think about your board member one-on-one and then see if you still think that. I would hope that we would keep a set amount and the reason for that set amount of time, whether it's three or five or ten or fifteen, is that it's fair for all. So if you have your best friend that comes up in a speaking, you don't give them ten minutes where somebody you don't like, you only give five minutes. So I would encourage whatever the board does, because we also would need to change our policy, is to say if it's gonna be five, it's five. If it's gonna be three, it's three, but then we keep it that way.
Yeah, most definitely. It's not gonna change.
You don't want favoritism going on.
No, it shouldn't cha- no, it shouldn't change. It should be one set time. Um, whether it's three minutes at the end or five minutes in the, you know, in the past, you could only talk about, the first, uh, public discussion was, uh, anything that's on the agenda. And you couldn't talk about anything else if it wasn't on the agenda, which kinda makes sense because you wanna encourage people to talk about the agenda, so you have it in the back of your mind when you're voting on things. But, uh, and then the last, uh, discussion was, you know, open to whatever. But it, it does come, the control factor comes from us as, you know, if they start, you know, and I mean this nice beating down the superintendent, we've gotta stop that, you know? We can't let that happen. Or beating down me, because my last name's Fox, we gotta stop that because it's not gonna be, "What time is it, Mr. Fox? We're not gonna play that game." Um, you know, that, we, we have to have control and point of order or, you know, and the, and the president has to do that too. Bang the gavel and, I mean, that's where you have the control.
So I, I like the five minutes. Also now, I'm, in a couple workshops, I've heard we do one minute at the end. That needs to be three minutes. They said if you, if you're doing less than three minutes, you're really telling the public you don't want to hear them, to give them one minute. And, um, I, uh, many districts have, um, and I remember we used to do it, the first comment is on the agenda, so if somebody wants to weigh in on something we're gonna vote on, then it gives people time to get here for the last comment if it's, you know, they can't get here and it's something personal they want to bring up. I would hope we would solve a lot of problems before it gets to, to the podium. So I don't think we would have, it would be a major happening if it was lined up and we gave them five minutes and we would be here till others, you know, till, till midnight. So I li- I like the five, I like the three. I like the idea that you don't play favoritism that way. That makes a lot of sense. So, um...
I would, um, just ask C underneath that, at regular board meetings, the board shall allow a total of thirty minutes to hear persons who desire to make comments to the board. I don't know that we've gone over thirty minutes ever, but I don't know if you wanna adjust that or not.
I think that's fine.
That would be six people.
I mean, if there's a lot at one given point for whatever reason, I think that, you know...
And if the thirty minutes is up, can't we as a board vote to make additional time?
You always make adjustments as a board.
You know, um, we'll go until eight, ten or, you know, whatever.
I also had five minutes and three minutes.
What can you just set on?
Sorry, uh, ten.
Ten.
Yeah, I already turned off at ten. Right in the middle, right, right here. One, three, two, ten. Is that your off correct?
No.
Okay.
Persons addressing the board, I have it. It's correct. So, okay, so, uh, we can make that adjustment.
Are we doing five and three? Are we doing five and five?
Aren't they five and three?
Five and three.
Okay.
And that we'll vote on Monday because we don't, we're not gonna vote on that here.
I think I might have to change the policy to, uh, to get that policy.
Yes.
So I have to go first reading, second reading.
On regular board meeting agenda outlines, one point one-three, there's conference requests over five hundred dollars after special order of business.
What page are you on hiding?
Um, page six of twenty-four.
I just wanna make sure I captured it all.
I think that should be like under, um, new business, maybe, if we're following this guideline.
The con- the conference is under five hundred?
Over, over five hundred. You have it before, like, unfinished business, before the consent agenda.
I think that's where it has been. I think that's just written in the wrong spot.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking, is it to be moved. And I know, um, in years past, we talked about possibly, um, following what other districts do and moving the superintendent report to the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if that's something this board would consider.
On the suggested agenda is under new business.
It's at the end. New business future meetings, right? Like this is unfinished business, consent, unfinished new business, and then superintendent's report. So it would go above.
Right, so it's after the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I can see that. I, it would inform discussion of the agenda items if we had that context ahead of time. I can see the benefit in that.
Who can be longer to talk to you all of you?
So we're moving it to where?
Under consent.
Yeah, okay. It's not part of consent, it's under consent. Gotcha.
That's not funny touch.
What?
I said, "Oh, just give me more time to talk to you." I said, "It's not funny."
I have to feel rushed to get out of here.
It's a little funny.
Careful, we'll put a limit on you too.
There you go.
You'll get the minute that we took away from everybody else.
My next inquiry is on one point four, board member participation in discussion, debating and voting. On page eleven of fourteen and twelve, twenty-four, sorry. It's I, the question I have is on item E. Once the final decision is reached, each member has the responsibility, it says two-two, so there only should be one-two, support the decision and aid in the implementation. I just, I mean, supporting the decision is, we all do, but I'm kinda, kinda don't like the "and aid in the implementation."
I think, um, if I may, I believe what that just means is that you support it going forward. So when you're in the public, you speak it up, what have you. I remember an individual that's here, Mr. Humpel says, "I may not agree, but after I leave this table, even if I didn't agree to it, that's the decision of the board. We don't speak out against it anymore." I, I think either way, if you remove it or not, it still has the same symbol. And remember, we got, we copied this off somebody else.
Okay.
So are we leaving it? Whatever you guys wanna do?
I don't know. I just... I, I, I think it could end it, support the decision.
It's neither here nor there. I think it means the same thing, like, really, once you make a decision, it's done.
Okay, I, I, then I, then go ahead and remove it.
Figure out aid and aid in its implementation.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um, the next item is one point five, the board members' responsibilities to inquiries about closed session. Board members are to refer to inquiries about closed session too. I think we should always go to the board president before we go to the superintendent. Just my feeling. So maybe just maybe switch that around.
You want board president or the superintendent first?
Yeah, but I think, I think we should just always go to the board president first.
I think your policies and, um, not that I, I think that it's gone this way, uh, before in the past, but your policies say either or on that and development of that because it's the nature that we're supposed to be doing it together.
Then you can put board president or the superintendent. Just reverse them.
Yeah, just flip.
Yeah, I'm okay with it flipped. I just think we should go to the board president before we go to the superintendent.
Because you could go to either or. You're just gonna go to board president first, but you can still go to superintendent.
I don't, I don't read that as representing a, a hierarchy of an order that you have to go to. I just have a... I interpret that as saying one or the other.
Prioritization isn't really defined in the statement, so... I think it's contextual about where the... I think it's contextual about where the inquiries are coming from as well.
So, leave it as is.
I just don't know that it matters.
Do you have any more?
What did you, what did we end up on that one? Because I have it switched, are we not switching it or removing it? Was it going to the board president or superintendent first?
The only reason I would say, to Heidi's point, is we're supposed to always go through the board president, and she communicates with you. That's all. I think that's what.
I just think what Nate and April were saying is, when you look at it and it says superintendent or board president, it's not saying you have to go to superintendent just because her name is first.
Right. No, I get that.
I'm happy to switch to board president first.
Surprise us, I guess we'll see that.
Now, my next one is board development, new member orientation. I was reading through this section, and I'm thinking, this might be a good topic for our first workshop, is to go through this, because it says the links and getting a...
Can you give the number, Heidi?
It's...
Page 15.
3.1. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We tried mentors once, we didn't pull it off.
That sentence reads funny to me, too. By the board president as a mentor with the assistance of the superintendent or the superintendent's designate. But it says the board president's supposed to designate, and then it says the superintendent designates. So we just read weird.
I think it just means the board president will work together with the assistance of the superintendent or superintendent designate to provide a mentor. That's really what that is.
The sentence is just clunky.
Is it funky to you?
Yeah. I mean, it's clunky in sort of like a meaningless way. I think that's saying...
Because, can I tell you that, that board orientation has always been done with the superintendent, with the different groups? We didn't do that this year, and usually the board president is present during that time to provide assistance.
I think if, if it's not a requirement, if we're just saying that this is, the following item shall be provided or made available, I think we can, if we even want to put it in here, just something about approaching the board president with a request for a mentor. This is...
There used to be a Neola policy.
The whole item is sort of word salad.
I think there was a Neola policy, is where it's.
Yeah, that's why this is...
I don't remember that board president is a mentor.
It's just a repetitive, clunky statement, I think is...
I think it sounds like the board president does everything there, and if needs assistance of the superintendent, you get the assistance.
Do we, in year, we don't usually use mentor, I guess it would be...
We should use a mentor. I mean, I think it is good for somebody to come to, I mean, if you remember back, when Scott was here, that's one of the things he said, right? Like, you should mentor each other. That's not, that's also a way to provide a relationship, that when, you know, you provide each other mentorship, not within the individuals we're used to, but with somebody else that has that experience, and you hear somebody else's vision, and you hear somebody else's experience. Maybe you have lunch with them, maybe you, you know, have coffee with them.
I don't know if the board president needs to designate the person, I would suggest, as a board president, I would say, you know, how, April, how, you know, would you work with, you know, a little bit with so and so?
So that's designating.
Designating.
So, yeah.
Well, isn't that, but she could say no.
I just think if there was a period...
Do you want me to tweak this?
Yeah, something.
Yeah, the formatting is just odd, because it sort of jumps into these bullet points where you think that it's part of that list. I think it's a formatting issue more than anything. I just, I think that the bullet points and then sort of the things that are off to the side there make it look like a totally separate item when it doesn't necessarily need to be. It just, I think we're all saying the same thing. The format of this page is just odd.
Okay, so we're going to work on that, we're going to work on that.
And like item number four, a copy of the job descriptions of the superintendent and the top administrators, I mean, that would be great to have. And, you know, like their contact information, and a copy of the link of the staff salary schedules and fringe benefit programs included, I mean...
Those are all online. But we can put them in your folders, because we have folders that are out there for you guys, I was looking at.
I mean, I just think it might, this whole section, 3.1, might be a good workshop, maybe in February, just to get the new board members and everybody re-affiliated with Hazel Park and knowing what's going on, I don't know, just my suggestion.
We certainly could do that, but we do have Akra coming at that board meeting, and it's our first data, Akra, who does the data stuff, her number that we purchase, and Stephanie doing your data workshop, which is by recommendation of the superintendent's calendar that we have in February, the first meeting in February, that you have an update on student performance.
But is that a workshop, or is that at a regular?
Workshop. No, we aren't doing those at a regular meeting, those are long. I mean, we could do an hour of that and an hour of this.
So if you knew that was on, if you knew that was us already scheduled workshop, why isn't it on our, say, workshop data?
We didn't put what, we don't necessarily put what it is. I'll give it to you later when you guys give us that, but we could do an hour of Stephanie and Akra, and then an hour of this. Would that work?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever, everybody else is comfortable with. It was just a suggestion.
No, I like the idea. I mean, maybe the next workshop, we could do that.
So an hour and an hour.
An hour and an hour.
Okay.
After an hour, data's going to get overwhelming.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
If I could ask a question on the, on the agenda items on 1.13. It used to have something called recognition and accommodations. That was a place where we could thank people for their donations, or thank band members for attending the solo concerts. Remember that?
We usually do it at public comments, we took that away.
So you moved it to the public comments?
Board member comments and statements, it's at the end here.
And the superintendent will do that, and then we also think, you know, it's usually go in consent agenda.
Because it just seems like the, nobody's submitting anything, that, I mean, we used to submit a lot of things from all the schools, but it seemed to go right down, right down.
Well, I, what my take on that would be, knowing what we ask of everybody, is they're overwhelmed. There's a lot they have to do, and what we were doing 10 years ago isn't anything used to what they're doing now, and what we were doing 20 years ago isn't even close to what we're doing 10 years ago.
So you just moved it up to the, like thanking, what's his name for the paper that was supplied?
We'd bring a presentation every month to you.
Or if somebody donates computers and things like that.
That'll go on here as well, we're going to thank you later.
All right, I'm just curious.
You certainly can change it, but I don't think we're going to get bill needs to do that. I think what we got is some people just had to come up with something every time.
I don't want to make work.
We can talk about that. I'll talk to you about that. I know what you're, what you're saying, and I want, I really want to make these meetings, they say over 90 minutes, you're just losing people's attention, and I'm like, I want to work on that goal. So. Are we set with this?
I just have another question on page 19 of 24, 4.8. It says the board president shall appoint three members of the board to be on the finance committee. Item B, the finance committee shall meet with the administration. Administration is needed during the year to review the school budget and make changes as necessary to meet the district goals with, within the accepted revenue and expenses. We don't have a finance committee anymore.
We don't have a policy committee, and they're all in there as well.
Yeah.
My suggestion is to wait and make sure for another year before we take all those off, to make sure you guys want them off, and then remove it to make the whole, whatever, committee of the whole on there. We had agreed right in January to relook and see if you wanted committee of the whole and you liked it. But you guys may want to change it after individuals have been on here for another year and separate them again.
Okay.
Or not.
Well, and I kind of think that we need, not necessarily the budget one, but I would like a policy one, because I think our policies are, need some alignment. And if we had a policy committee that said, all right, we're going to do an in-depth study of this policy, this, and then bring it before the board.
To the committee of the whole.
To the committee of the whole, yes. So I would love to keep a policy.
We put policy in to have a committee of the whole, and then we're going to have another meeting to do a policy meeting outside the committee of the whole and bring it to the committee of the whole, instead of everybody being involved in policy.
Well, wouldn't that be like a workshop or a study session, like a study session not a workshop?
You, yep, if the board said, hey, Dr. Kirby, we'd like to relook at finance, or, Dr. Kirby, we want you to go to Neola, and then we would start bringing all of that stuff back in.
Okay, so we do it, as long as it's done.
It's being done here. You would be interruptions to us.
Okay.
Are we set? Are we all set? Okay, board minutes.
I think we place this on Deb, right? Because it seems that there were some questions of things you'd like to be added, and like every time it's good, every board has a little different idea, and we want to make sure that we're clear what you want. So Jamie, no, she said, so Jamie does that in the minutes, that will work for you.
I have a good article I meant to bring in and forgot, from Fred Bonasik, and it's up to us what we want in our minutes, how lengthy, it doesn't suggest conversations, that so and so sent this and that, but Robert's Rules of Order, and what they suggest is like the who's here, the time, and it's just very skimpy, motion passed, so we could, I would like to see more, if it's two sentences, I'd like to see more in the minutes. So I do have that article to share, and then you can make the decision, but, did you want to say something, trustee Fox?
Well, I just, I think, I mean, if you go back to, and I'm sorry to keep going backwards, but if you go back, they made more sense, like in 2015, and I pulled up one here, like appointment of auditors, and in the minute it says it's recommended that the Board of Education retain the services of blah for the calendar year. That's, that's what I'm talking about. Not to leave it blank, but to, and then you put the yeses and nays, but just put that little short statement in there, so that way you know who was appointed and what the board actually, you know, appointed. The same kind of thing with like the bank accounts. It is recommended that the bank accounts is attached, be approved for the blah calendar year. Just so, because you're going to have the attachment of an agenda, just, just a little bit more description, not to get through word by word by word, but just a little bit more description where they could find it, or a lot of times you would see the stuff just cut and pasted from the actual agenda, so that way people would see it in the minutes. That's the kind of stuff that I was thinking about. I don't know if that helps.
You know, several years ago, we did do that. It's been, I don't know, maybe three years that we went to this very shortened version. So, we did do that, but I can see not adding the discussion, because the minutes could be 20 pages.
Long, yes.
It's also skewed.
I think like one or two sentences or something like that, instead of the whole, you know, 30 pages of discussion. It's just that I was looking for something, I can't remember what it was, but I had no clue, because it was like nothing. It was just a vote in the item, and it was like, well, is it that, or is it not? You know, and I hate to have to keep calling, or, you know, I guess I could write an email and say, okay, what happened, you know, three years ago, or, I don't know, that's just my suggestion.
You know what I see a lot of stuff, because I knew that, too, I'll say, it just says the vote, whatever, board briefs. Board briefs give like this sentence of detail if you're talking about.
And I used to see that when I worked, because you guys used to send it.
We do board briefs.
Yeah, that would, that, that is nice.
They're online.
So couldn't that couple of sentences be in the minutes and forget about board briefs?
Board briefs are on board for...
So, island one.
There are more to go out immediately to the staff and the community, so they know what to do.
That's where I saw it before, yeah.
Okay, then we need to publicize, read your board briefs.
Because no way do I want to make more work for...
He blasts them out.
We need to encourage. The board briefs are also on one side.
And they're blasted, and then they're sent to the staff. We, why don't we give it a shot, and we'll kind of try it and put a couple sentences, and you guys can tweak it as you go along, as I like, I don't like. Like I said, every board is different, and so every time you got to let us know what you want, communicate, so that we can do it right.
And I could be way off base, you know, if the other board members think I'm crazy, please let me out.
Anybody on the continent, I don't think we're off base, anybody else?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's off base, but I, I don't know that I would be in favor of rolling board briefs into the minutes, only because the amount of time it takes us to come back, review, approve, accept, and then publish those is, I mean, sometimes months. So if, you know, having sort of that, at a glance of what happened at the meeting, without having to wait for approval and acceptance, I, it is a double document, but it's a double document for a reason. One of them just is cumbersome and takes time, the other one can unofficially go out the very next day. I mean, maybe add them as an attach, I mean, when we accept the minutes, we can include them as an attachment or an appendices, so that the double work isn't there, they're just enveloped as part of it.
Say that again?
So we're accepting and approving minutes, so that they can come out. Instead of having to have that tiny narrative in both places, as part of the minutes, could we agree, as the board when accepting them, that the board briefs are an attachment or an appendix to the minutes? And then they can go out ahead of time, but can be accepted as part of it when we vote.
So the board briefs go out immediately?
Right.
In the minutes, she listens to the whole meeting, to be correct.
Yeah, but if, if what we're saying is we want to include that little tiny narrative in the minutes, instead of having to do that two times, could we just pull board briefs in and include them as an attachment to the minutes?
And you could say into the statement before the roll call, please see board briefs number one, or, or you could just cut and paste the board briefs into that.
Just so that you can find them, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I do know that sometimes when you do control F to search, and you put a keyword in that you think it should be there, but it's not there, so it's more difficult to find.
I think it's a convenience thing, what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's an attachment, so when we get the minutes in eight days or whatever it is, it's right there for us. We pull up, and we can just scroll and see, without going off, going on Hazel Park Schools, looking at board briefs, it's like in a packet.
Can I make that suggestion?
Four, kind of.
How about we give it a shot, putting a couple sentences in and attaching the board briefs, then you can compare them for a couple meetings and determine...
Pick our favorite?
Yes. What works best for you. Because I, I think, when I hear you say convenience, Bob, I hear you say, like, listen, it's our job to do the minutes for you guys, and it's our job to communicate to the public. So if it takes a few minutes to put the couple sentences in there, I think that's okay. Might be a little different, because we might want to get atoned in what we do for the board briefs, but let's do it both ways, and let you guys look at it, and then have this conversation at your convenience.
Okay. Everybody agree? Sounds fine to me.
Everybody will get what they want.
Okay. All right, board workshop topics. So, I thought governance would be good, seeing we have new members. And so I called M A S B about scat morale. Is he on? He's a, what do you call him? He's a trainer. It's $825 for three hours, and it would be about governance. I don't know, after you guys go to Fridays for 101 thing, I don't know, but anyways, it can, what happens, the district pays it, and they reimburse the district in June, and I brought up, because we have that $750 from a M A S B for a workshop. So she said that could be applied, and so we could have them once, we could have them twice, whatever. twice, whatever we felt after the first time. So that's my suggestion for workshop is governance.
Did you not want us to do data in February, and you want governance in February, or do you want governance in March, or do you want governance in April?
I want governance soon, if we're going to do it.
So do you want us to push data off? We have somebody coming in from Illinois, so we.
Do you guys want governance? Do you have a different idea, anybody?
I think they're going to have governance in their workshop on Friday, right?
Isn't governance a separate one? Total separate, three-hour workshop from Board 101?
Oh, is it?
Yeah. And you get credit for it and stuff, I believe.
But I don't, I don't want to push off someone that.
I already have it.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to push off somebody.
Maybe in March.
That's fine.
I would go out on a limb and say.
That's still early enough.
I, I would go out on a limb and say that while I think a workshop on governance is governance, I can see the benefit, I can see how it would be necessary. I think having Scott come in is a wonderful idea, but if he is going to come in and facilitate, the first time that he comes, I would love to see him either come to a workshop, or for us to turn a workshop into a retreat, and focus on team building, resolution, discussion. I think governance is an issue that we face. I don't know that it's the biggest issue that we face, and the quicker we can get ahead of that.
Would you recommend doing that on possibly a Saturday? Because in the evening, to do both, that's a long night.
Not opposed to it.
With your time to retreat, those are usually like Saturday, half-day, sometimes are longer, is that what you're thinking?
We could certainly do that. I think it could probably supplant a workshop. I mean, we could, we talked about getting rid of some of those Mondays, I think we could get rid of one of those Mondays and sort of punt that to a retreat. But, I mean, when we're talking about relevant issues that we want to jump in and start working on, I don't know that any of us could disagree that that shouldn't be at the top of the list.
I think they could, he could probably put something together to give credit for, that has that, some of the governance and other pieces in place for that.
I was hoping, part of the reason was to help unify us and bring together in a team atmosphere, environments.
Do you want to?
I agree. I think we need to learn how to do that.
I think.
Farmington did it, it worked out amazing, them.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said Farmington did those retreats.
Yeah.
And team building, and it worked out amazing for them.
I think March is fine, we can do the March 1st.
We'll have to see if they have that date. Did you do a Saturday, or did you want the?
No, you know what, I gave her the two dates, it might be possible she was going to check his calendar. I don't know, how do you feel about a Saturday half-day?
We're not starting at 6:45, right?
As long as.
The girl. I'm just saying, just put it out there. We weren't going to start the weekday at 6:45 either.
I'm just not available on the first, February 1st, or March 1st, I'm not available that day.
Well, I think the third, fourth, the third and fourth week, I'm not, spring break, and Ellie's in Florida, so.
March, March 3rd.
March 3rd.
And I, let's, this.
But March 3rd is a Monday.
So they're suggesting we do a Saturday.
I went from the calendar, right? Oh, in case we need to retreat.
Cancel the Monday and do the file through that Saturday, maybe.
Yeah, that's what I think.
He can do governance and a little bit more, Bob. We could say, do it four hours, and do a little bit more, and have a little breakfast, and, okay. We could do that for two.
From eight to 12:30.
I think we should do nine.
Eight to 12:30.
Eight?
Nine.
I think you should do nine.
Nine to 1:30? I prefer earlier myself.
You're right.
We, I can do eight.
I, I don't care.
Man, I'm not.
What date is that? I wouldn't say that I'm a morning person, but.
But if we're going to have that breakfast, just make sure that there's coffee.
That's Jamie's job.
And then some extra coffee.
What day is it?
I'm looking again, too.
Is that March 8th? That's Saturday?
March 8th.
Jamie, none of that light roast stuff, okay? It's 8:00 AM.
Daylight savings.
That's daylight savings, so we lose an hour on top of that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to write that down. 8:00 AM feels like seven.
Eight to Detroit. Eight to 12:30.
We're getting closer to that six.
It feels like 6:45 to me.
I'm sorry, I'm going to be coming back from AAS on the 8th. I wouldn't be able to be present on government.
That's okay.
I'm team member number eight. Thank to be for us.
Well, see, and then, so I can't do the first, you can't do the eighth, and then the, then it's spring break, is that what you're saying?
No, we could do the 15th.
So do you want to check on the 15th?
15th is okay.
I'm fine with the 15th.
I'm fine with the 15th.
Yeah, me too.
That's true. I'm away from me. All right, March 15th it is, we'll do governance now. There's other workshops. Well, how are we going to do that? We said we'll leave it on the schedule, and we'll think of something as we go, so.
Or cancel.
Well, I thought one of the things, Bob, is to get a list of them, and then we could talk about the direction that you wanted and get them scheduled for the year, because you aren't doing my eval this year, so that takes some of those workshops away for you.
Why are we evaluating this year?
Because I had three highly effectives.
I thought with the new law, that didn't apply.
No, that applies even more so. Now all you have to do is have effectives. It still applies.
Wouldn't one of them be board self-evaluation?
Yes.
So that would be one workshop, which is usually later, like May, May 5th.
I would not be opposed to every other time or every third time. We don't have to think of that many topics then, or we don't have to come in that many Mondays.
So is it board self-evaluation and goals? Is that what we're saying?
May 5th.
Yeah.
Or with the board goals?
You know, I think we should do goals then, for the following year, because half of this school year is done, but we need to do board goals. We haven't had them for two years.
We need to do them now?
No, we could do them in May for September, for the coming forward.
Not to burst your bubble, but I just want to remind you that it sometimes takes us a little bit to get through the self-evaluation at the whole time. So you have to be willing to give it a little more extra time if you're going to do your goals after that.
On May 5th.
Seagodamayo.
Margaritas at the table?
Well, maybe you want to come to my home. We can't do them here, unless you want nada margaritas. Yeah. That just seems like a long meeting.
So, you know, if the eval goes long, we just table the goals and do it in June, right? We could just do that. Okay, and so we're up to E. Truen Law.
Yeah, I'd like to make motion on that. I'd like to make motion to direct the superintendent to pay Truen Law a retainer for your $2,500 by Tuesday, January 14th, no later than 3:00 PM. Support.
Discussion, oh, motions made. Oh my gosh.
Yeah, so.
I'm not in the habit yet.
I have a spreadsheet of all the different, I've never worked with Truen before, I have a spreadsheet of all the different attorney firms that everybody uses, and one of the things that, when I, I received a retainer, that I know nothing, I just got an email back from them today of what it covers and the hourly rate, this board has never chosen to do a retainer, they've always done hourly rates. So normally the board would kind of talk about, I want this attorney firm for this, I want this attorney firm for this, and you would have perhaps executive counsel do that. The only other reason that you would do law firm separate is if you have superintendent issue that's coming up. And if that's so, then I would ask that we go into closed session at this point in time and have that conversation. But I, I think you need to decide and look at their cost per hour and get the information before you make a decision to go with them, and what the $2,500 is for.
I was going to say, I want to say yes, just because I don't know anything about it.
I just got the email this afternoon about their costs, their hourly rates, how they do that, and I, to be honest with you, I haven't been able to read all the way through it to give any advice about, like, we don't, we haven't kept a retainer on purpose because we try not to call unless we do. So I do have, Bob, for you tomorrow, a spreadsheet of the districts that responded, 18 of them, about who they go to and for what purpose, what ones do board separate, what ones don't, and all of that for you, prepared for tomorrow's meeting.
So, how this, I, I checked with Truen Law, because I'm not a fan of our board policies, and then this retainer thing came through. And they have, I like their policies, they have good, I like their, how it's written. But, so anyway, then this came through, and I think that we voted last week to add them as one of our law firms, so I think they're one of our law firms. We voted, I asked for discussion, there wasn't any discussion, and I think it is one of our law firms, and I didn't know, I never knew, I don't think anyone knows here that we'd operate without a retainer. I thought all attorneys have retainers. So I wasn't aware of that to begin with. So I think that we need to proceed, and we hired them by putting them on the list.
What are you hiring them for?
So, I just said, I'm looking at the policies, and when you're, their rate is cheaper, I forget, I believe it's $8,000 if you are a client, they do handbooks, I think, for I got the paper from the conference, when we went to the conference. There's two more things they do that's discounted if you're a client.
Benefits of the retainer, I'm scanning through here quickly, and I just don't know if the retainer is for the year, for the quarter of the year, it says lower hourly rates, no charge for occasional brief telephone calls. I'd want to ask, what does that mean? Because you want to be clear about what that means and what that doesn't mean. Access to all of our attorneys through the practice group, reduced pricing for initial purchase and annual updates for the Truen Policy Service, access to model language of forms that are generally provided without charge for a nominal flat fee, school law notes, access to our annual spring webinar season, periodic and prompt electric notes, e-blass, many of us get those already from Truen. We also provide additional valuable services at no charge to our, like, clients regarding pertinent legal developments that affect your school day, day-to-day operations. Recent examples of those services includes reviewing forms such as municipal finance qualifying statement, regular attending meetings at the State Tenure Commission and Michigan Employ, those are just things we're doing, the tenure. We take great pride in our e-practice area, so the retainer fee for the calendar year is $2,500, which means remains unchanged. The, for 2025, fees will be developed to our retainer and non-retainer clients for the following hour. So if you're a retainer, you get shareholder, a shareholder attorney at 335 an hour, a non-retainer, you go 385, senior associates 315, non-retainer is 365, and a retainer 285 for the associates, and non-retainer for 345. And then there's some more in here as well, some milled conversation, and, so I just received that this afternoon. And I, if I'm, we're asking this, am I supposed to also be getting information from Miller Johnson? And then are you directing us or asking us which firms that we might want to use for different things as well, so that it's, most of my peers are really, it's really clear, like, we're using Clark Hill for this, we're using Truen for this, we're using Miller Johnson for this? And that's the conversation that we talked about having in February together.
So, well, I think that we should, we should vote, because I, I believe, I know that we hired them when we voted for the list, and there's a motion to direct the payment, and so the board can decide after what you heard, and going forward, we can vote and, you know, make the, make the payment or not make the payment, to officially, maybe it's the first time we operate with a retainer. I don't know. So, anybody, well, first, we got the motion, we got the second, any more discussion?
Only are you also, since you're directing me to do this, directing me to hire Miller Johnson as well on a retainer?
Well, she would have to add that to the motion.
I'm not adding that to the motion at this time. And what did you say it has to be done by? Tomorrow, by 3:00. That's, we're not running bills tomorrow by 3:00? Be paid by credit card, I believe. I don't know that they can or can't. I'm just telling you that bills will get paid on Thursday.
What is the rush on this? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just curious why it has to be done by tomorrow?
I think because we already voted to hire them, and the board's giving directions, so that's why.
So will we have to do the retainer with them?
This motion has the retainer in there. But you also directed us at the last meeting to hire Miller Johnson, and Clark Hill, and Jamarco, and, I guess the only thing I'm asking for afterwards is, are you asking us to give you input on what's using to, so that it's clear to individuals about who we. It's just like having the, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. It's just like having the three architect firms, they're there if we decide to use them. Right, but we don't have an agreement with Miller Johnson, so that's what I'm asking. Right now you're saying to do this one tomorrow, because you want to do policies, which, then you would direct us to relook at those policies.
Well, I, I think we should vote on this motion, and then we should add, look into what the fee is, and make the next meeting motion to continue on with Miller Johnson.
I think I would feel more comfortable voting on the motion if, I, there, there is mention on their website of lowered hourly rates with the retainer. I would feel more comfortable if we knew what that was. $2,500 is a good chunk of money to pay for a pretty nebulous, just in case we need to call you. If either we had better definition of what we received with a $2,500 retainer, or if we had a very specific motion that said that we wanted to retain them for $2,500 for the purpose of reviewing, reviewing board policies, or through the law firm policy service, or something, I, it's just a lot of money to agree to pay for a maybe. We've, we have not approved less expensive things that were far more specific, under the guise of we want it to be fiscally responsible and save the district money, to then turn around and say, here's $2,500 as a retainer for a maybe. It, it doesn't necessarily sit well with me. You know, if, if we are here and we're saying that we want to be fiscally responsible, we are fiduciaries of the district's money, we are still awaiting a budget presentation, and all of these things that we've sort of been espousing over the past few months, it just doesn't necessarily sit comfortably with me to then fork over some maybe money.
May I speak? Would you like someone to come and present from each of those two firms, so that you get a sense of them, because not everybody has met them. I've, I've heard Truen at conferences before, I don't think I've really heard Miller Johnson all that much. Would you like them to come and talk about the policy pieces to this group?
I think I'd feel more comfortable with a vote if I had them.
Well, my opinion is we already reached out to Truen Law, and we've already talked to them, which is why we are saying that we're, we're going to pay them. We haven't reached out to Miller Johnson, we wanted, the president wanted to talk about policies with them, and we've reached out to them, and so we should, at least that they would be getting paid for that time.
Did the board reach out to them, or you guys reached out to them ahead of time?
I reached out to them. I made the call on January 7th.
I just don't feel comfortable with voting on this yet. Or if we brought them all together, and we did have them come, and then voted on each one separately, like if we had Truen do this, and the other one do whatever, I just would feel more comfortable with them all together, saying this is what we want them all for.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable retaining legal counsel for an unknown or undefined reason. I, I think if it is to review and discuss redeveloping policies, then that needs to be specified. If we are going to discuss giving the board president the direction to secure legal counsel for a different reason, then that needs to be done, but to have this. But to have this be open-ended and to spend money for an open-ended reason, it just feels fiscally irresponsible to me.
You know, I should add, I, I shared with Dr. Groupie, I think the board needs our own counsel, not where Clark Hill is district counsel and board counsel. I think we need our own separate counsel. I think that Clark Hill is, I'm not impressed. I, I think that they cater to the superintendent. And I just think that's, that's another part of it, is we need our own board counsel.
And there are, I do have a spreadsheet, like I said, that I prepared to have this conversation with Bob tomorrow, we talked about doing that, that shows there's probably about three or four districts that the board has their separate counsel, the rest of them, they go through the superintendent to the, so there's a variety of them that are in there. Like, I think Ferndale, because I wanted to further this conversation together so that...
This is why I was hoping that maybe we could table it and have more discussion.
I'm not changing it.
Well, we need to vote because there's a motion.
There's a motion to make this payment?
No, there's a motion to...
There's a motion to make the retainer.
Right.
I, I would just caution, I, I don't disagree necessarily with President Hinton that the board having its own legal counsel is beneficial. I think that that is a wise move. However, I think we're skating on very thin ice by saying in our meeting that the reason for the retainer and the reason to retain legal counsel, and we have said this several times now, is specified to reviewing policies and policy service because we are, if and when we use this law firm for any other reason, we are opening ourselves up to a wormhole.
They're an attorney.
Correct.
We can use them for different reasons.
But if we are going to, first of all, we never had the chance as a board to openly or as a, as a group of seven, discuss the hiring of legal counsel. And instead of directing the president to secure legal counsel, we instead have a motion to pay for something that has been previously looked into. So we're already a step behind. And we have now said on record that this is for policy services and policy review, that that was the primary reason for contacting them.
That was part of the discussion. I wouldn't say it's on record because that's not what my motion is for.
The motion is just to pay.
Correct.
But as a board, and if, if it does come that we need to be in closed session in order to discuss this, I would certainly support that. But as a board, if we are going to authorize payment to legal counsel or we are going to authorize securing legal counsel without fully understanding the reason that we are approaching them, that they have already been approached or that we will be paying them, is thin ice.
Will you, everybody approved them at the last meeting to be on our list?
To be on the list, but we're talking about payment.
Of $2,500.
And that, I'm just not comfortable with an open-ended payment. That's all.
Retainer's a retainer, it's just saying that they're, they, we can speak to them.
We can speak to them without the retainer though, too.
So...
Excuse me, I'm new, but is this something that not, that shouldn't be voted on at a board meeting as opposed to committee of the whole? You know, we just added this to the agenda right now.
Right.
You know, we haven't voted on anything else. My understanding was that we vote on this type of stuff at a board meeting. It's on an agenda so the public knows. You know, we, we were just talking about being transparent for the public, you know, including the public. To me, this seems to kind of be going against that.
That is a true statement. However, whenever the whole board is together, we can make a motion and the whole board is together and this is a public meeting, it was posted. So we can make motions.
We can, since it's not in the bylaws, it should be in the bylaws that you don't vote in committee meetings or workshops or et cetera. It's not in our bylaws that says we cannot vote because it is a public meeting. So that was a great question.
You can, you're absolutely correct, Bob. You can add anything you'd like to vote at any meeting because all meetings are regular meetings.
Correct.
I disagree with what he's saying because it was just added today, so we don't have, we don't have everything.
Yeah, with all due respect, I haven't seen anything. So for me to legitimately vote on something that I haven't read or seen, I feel is, is against the spirit of what we're here for.
So we added them to the list and there was no questions or discussion. I called for discussion, it was just added on. So I'm just going to call for a vote on the motion. I like the input, it's been good input. So the motion is to pay Truand Law by tomorrow at 3:00.
I'm not able to pay them by tomorrow.
You can pay them.
We are not running checks tomorrow.
Second by trustee vice president.
Is there a follow-up meeting that's already scheduled with them? I mean, is there a reason that the retainer needs to be paid by tomorrow? They're...
No.
That's why I didn't know why we couldn't wait until our board meeting so we have more information.
I, I agree with April. I'm struggling to understand the urgency to, to do this right now rather than potentially have a further review. You know, all board members have the, you know, information in front of them presented. And I understand what you're saying, yes, we did, you know, vote to hire this law firm or, you know...
But to add them to the list.
To add to the list. But that wasn't saying we're paying them this amount of money or, you know, we are going to hire them.
This, if we made a spirit of the list usually is that these are individuals we use. And that gives the administration the right to go forth and use these organizations. And then we would negotiate terms, come up with a lead person and present that back to as a board. This board can choose to do as they please. But that is the spirit of that organizational items is really for our views, you're giving us permission to use individuals. And we wouldn't use Miller Johnson or Truand until we were able to understand the cost and then determine as a group and bring back to you what we would use each of those for. If the board determines they want Truand for themselves, I mean, Truand does finance stuff with us as well. I got something in the mail today for my lab or whatever from them. You know, we certainly can do that too, but this, this board has the right to vote however they choose.
I will, I understand that we're voting, I will just, it looks like their practice area is expansive. They, they seem like a perfectly capable law firm. I, $2,500 is just a, it's a high retainer for something that we have not previously discussed. And it does, it, it concerns me a bit that it appears that there were in-depth discussions prior to an open meeting where this particular firm was discussed, contacted, and had the time to generate an invoice that has a less than 24-hour turnaround. I, I'm not opposed to securing them, I'm not opposed to retaining them. I think that this is, it's a rocky way to do it. That's all.
Okay, so let's vote. Would you roll call? Just book him. Flanders?
Yes.
LaBronda?
Yes.
Beaton?
No.
Becker?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
Ritty?
No.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries for three. So we're up to public comment, anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we're on to announcements, adjournments. It doesn't say announcements, it says adjournment. Any comments? I have a few things I want to...
I'm requesting a close session. Am I soft for it? Do we have to wait the whole thing for a close session?
Yeah, somebody needs to make a motion.
I disagree.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call for close session. Ritty?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
No.
LaBronda?
No.
Hinton? No. Motion passed. So, yeah, motion passed, close session. So, yeah, motion pass, close session.
Jackets, oh like a heated jacket?
Yeah.
Olivia's what?
Olivia's what?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we now motion to adjourn?
We are at...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I want to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I wanted to bring up about the basket. Brian Voss sent us a message about putting a basket together for the resource fair. I thought that would be a good idea. I don't know the date of that.
February...
Eight.
But I wondered if you would do it, Monica. I think it would be good.
She's thinking in her head, I have something to make.
No, I do, but I would love to. I will do that.
And we'll all donate to the basket.
Perfect.
What kind of basket do you want to make?
I was just going to suggest money.
Money, no, money to donate, not donate.
Right, but what kind of basket would you guys like to do?
Well, I think there's movies. I think there's...
Do you mean movies or...
I think art and... One of them's doing a lottery ticket.
So I know like around this time, a lot of people like doing, redo the, I know it's a fire pit and it's summertime, but feeling the s'mores, a lot of people have indoor fireplaces too. So like the s'more ones are really cool right now with like hot chocolates and ciders and hot teas and stuff.
That sounds great.
I took it upon myself and I was going to donate the movie one. And I bought Willy Wonka, but we could utilize some of those pieces if that would help you.
I could do like...
We could do more than...
I could do like a game night one with the movies and game nights.
Whatever, I mean, I'll be more than happy to give it to you and you can...
If not, you always can donate it to the Pramisome. They're right around the corner too.
Yep, we're February 24th, so anyone wants a basket for that one too.
Yeah.
There's also the chili cook-off. Don't forget that if you choose to be in the chili cook-off.
At the resource fair.
At the resource fair, yes.
I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings.
Well, I don't want to kill anybody.
Anyway, I will be cooking chili if you're...
Unless I'm sick once again. What do you want? So if we all donate, what, 10 bucks, that's 80 bucks, can that do a basket?
Yes.
I think, well, 10, that could be $70. So, motion to adjourn and then we can do the basket.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you support?
On your list?